Okay, good morning. Today is Tuesday, March 18th. The time is 9:30 a.m. and we can call the meeting to order. Erica, if you can do the roll call.
Commissioner Malika?
Here.
Commissioner Henson?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Commissioner Baca?
Here. Now, if you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I just need a motion to approve the agenda. Yes.
I move to approve the agenda with a modification for item, under the consent calendar, item O, to be removed. That's my motion?
Second. Second.
That motion passes five to zero. So, good morning, everyone. And this is Women's History Month. So, we are making history here in Adams County. And as Chair of the Board, it is an honor and privilege to recognize this observance as part of the first-ever county commission on which four out of the five members are women. In addition, the growing number of women in leadership roles here at Adams County, from the executive leadership team to department directors and deputy directors. It is a testament not only to our county's commitment and values to gender parity, but also our staff's remarkable talent and ability. I want to recognize all the women on staff, no matter their title, and in the Adams County community. You know, as I said last year, you don't have to hold an office to be important, to be important, to have a voice, or to be a change-maker. Women wake up every day and lead. You lead your families, and you lead classrooms, and you lead teams, and you lead departments. You are important. All of your work is important as you lead nonprofits, you volunteer in community, you're a good team player. So, I want to thank all of the women in our lives and in our worlds and those that we work with. So, Women's History Month offers us the opportunity to recognize the incredible contributions women have made throughout history and to reflect on how far we've come. So, Shirley Crossum, the first black woman elected to Congress, famously said, "If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair." In the same vein, humanitarian and renowned chef Jose Andres has often said, "To build longer tables, not higher walls." These two quotes speak to the heart of what we are celebrating today. The resilience and determination of women, as well as all the vital importance of allyship. Just as proudly celebrating the voices and accomplishments of women, it is important that we recognize the men who stand with us as allies and advocates. Women's History Month is about building a culture where everyone has a seat at the table. I'm proud to introduce this proclamation today, knowing that in Adams County, what were once folding chairs have become permanent seats. And most importantly, our table is big enough for all of us to have a voice and to make a difference side by side. With that, I'd like Commissioner Kathy Henson to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my privilege today to read this proclamation for Women's History Month. Whereas each year, the United States observes Women's History Month by celebrating the often overlooked contributions of women in history, society, and culture. March is selected as the month of observing Women's History Month to correspond with International Women's Day on March 8th. And whereas the population of Adams County is approximately 49.2% female, and whereas Adams County has 12,562 women-owned businesses, and whereas what began in 1978 as Women's History Day, when the idea caught on, and in 1980, the National Women's History Alliance championed for the holiday to be observed as a national week, which was expanded by President Jimmy Carter, who issued the first proclamation declaring the week of March 8th as National Women's History Week. Since 1987, the United States has formally recognized March as National Women's History Month. And whereas this year's theme, "Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations", celebrates the collective strength and influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership. We recognize the example of women who are committed to embracing everyone and excluding no one in the common quest for freedom and opportunity. We honor local women, past and present, who have taken the lead to show the importance of change and establish firm safeguards, practices, and legislation reflecting these values. Following decades of discrimination, we are proud to celebrate women who work for inclusion, equity, and fairness. And whereas, although too numerous to recognize individually by name, women have also served and continue to serve as civil rights leaders, community organizers, politicians, soldiers, educators, journalists, first responders, pioneers in art and science, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and so much more. And whereas women continue their rich history of significant and diverse contributions to the cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality of Adams County. And now, therefore, it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams does hereby proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month and encourages all residents to honor the rich diversity of women and celebrate the many ways they contribute to our nation and society.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Comments by the Board. Commissioner Malika and Henson.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that proclamation. I'm really excited about this proclamation because it gives me an opportunity to reflect on local leaders in the Adams County area that have helped pave the way for me to even be sitting here today. And so, I wanted to highlight some of these women today. First of all, you know, Colorado has always been a leader. When it comes to women's rights, we became the first state to grant women the right to vote through popular vote in 1893. Whoa, geez, 1893. And that pioneering spirit is something that continues to live in Adams County. I wanted to highlight a couple of the greats in the area. I know I'm probably missing somebody, so don't hold me accountable to that. But coming from Northland, you know, Kathleen Novak, the first woman female mayor of Northland, was pioneering for this city, as well as the Titan Joyce Downing. I had the privilege of serving with her when I was on Northland City Council, and she has done so much for the region. I also want to highlight the ferocious Margaret Carpenter, of course, of Thornton, which we all love and know. We have Joyce Thomas, the first mayor, female mayor of Federal Heights. And of course, we cannot forget Vi June, who broke the ground in Westminster. So, that's a play to Emma there. And of course, here at the county level, we have Eileen Valente. So, all of these women were trailblazers and proved that leadership is not defined by tradition, but by the courage to serve, the vision to lead, and the passion to make a difference. This Women's History Month, we celebrate their legacies and honor the women who continue to lead and inspire Adams County and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. Yes, I thank you for the opportunity to read this proclamation today. I'm very excited to be celebrating Women's History Month. It's exciting to be on this board of four women. And I was proud also to be on a city council in Thornton that was five to four majority women over our male counterparts. So, I'm accustomed to that, and it's a privilege. And I want to thank all the people who helped blaze the trail to help me and other women get to these positions. I also want to say that I had some great mentors in the city of Thornton, who, people, women, who continue to mentor me. And they are not the ones who sit on the dais. They're the ones who fight for their communities every day and teach me how to dig deep and go out and find the problems and uncover the problems. And I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. They've been very impactful to me. I also think about my mom, who ran a piano studio, was a public school teacher, and a church organist, and raised three kids with my dad. And Pat Schroder, who, you know, as a little girl, I was so lucky. I didn't know how lucky I was to have a female representative in Congress. Because from a very young age, I thought, well, yeah, women can do that. It's happening right now. That was a real privilege. And for those of you who don't know, I have a background in the performing arts. And so, I've been listening a lot lately to my new favorite musical called "Suffs", which is about women's suffrage. It was written by Shayna Taub. I highly recommend it. It's on Spotify and other places. And the final number of that song is called "Keep Marching On". And so, today, as we honor the trailblazers who helped women get to the positions we're in now, there's a line in that song that keeps ringing through my head, which is that, "The future demands that we fight for it now." So, we're going to keep knocking down those doors and breaking the glass ceilings and continue to fight for the rights of women and for full acknowledgement of our contributions in every level of society, in the home and in business and everywhere. And I look forward to continuing this journey, and I'm proud to be part of the Adams County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henson. I have Commissioner Steve Odoricio, and then Commissioner Emma Pinter.
Wow, look what I get to work with. Amazing people here. Both out here in the audience, in our staff, and also with the folks on this board. I appreciate the county commissioners that have been before us. Female Elaine Valente, Alice Nichol, Eva Henry, Jan Polowski, Mary Hodge, and then the four amazing folks that I get to work with here. Then I look at the other folks in our community that are inspiring. 98-year-old grandma Laura Molinaro, my mother-in-law Norma Frank, Robin Odoricio, and my daughter Sofia Rose Odoricio. Adams County has a long history of very strong women in it. Many in the audience here and many on the dais here. And it's an honor and privilege to be able to work with all of them and to support them and to learn from them. And I look forward to many more years of this. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Yes, thank you. I'll try to keep my remarks a little different, although I really appreciate the Vi June call-out. If you ever, she has since passed, but if you ever had the opportunity to run for office in Westminster, Vi would invite you to her back porch for lemonade to discuss, "What are your intentions of my city?", is essentially the conversation. And you had to explain yourself while she would invite different friends to interrogate you. And so, it was a wonderful little tradition in Westminster that we have, we have lost a little bit of. But I just want to say that I'm so honored to serve with these women, and I truly enjoy learning about history and hearing from people who are in active duty or retired from our military or who are serving at NASA or other scientific organizations and seeing their biographies white off of websites right now. I'd encourage you to look up different books that talk about the history of women and what they've done for the world, for scientific advancement, and for this country. One of my favorite is the History Chicks podcast. If you ever want to talk about history, I love the History Chicks. They cover different women in history. They often led very complicated lives, and so, we get to have those conversations in our family on road trips. And the Netflix movie, I always love to give a shout-out to, is The Six Triple Eight, which is about World War II and an amazing battalion of women who served in Europe at a time when it wasn't really available for women, and they broke ground and they solved unsolvable problems. You know, we have so many different activists that we can turn to or visionary leaders, whether it's a Marsha P. Johnson, who really helped us understand what it means to be a woman and what it means to be free, whether we have jurists like Ruth Bader Ginsburg, or mathematicians and scientists like Ada Lovelace. We have so many different types of leaders throughout history who have done things to change the course of our government, of our society, and even how we access technology, like Ada Lovelace did. So, I just want to say, take the opportunity to look at the women around you and take the opportunity to learn something, because there's always something new to learn about the contributions of women in history.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll just conclude our comments this morning, looking at Women's History Month, is that I think what you're hearing up here is that it takes a network of leaders, both men and women. It takes allies, both men and women, to help women. And one of those mentors, one of those allies that I look up to in my life, of course, it is, I come from a major uncle family. My mom, my sisters Stacy and Leslie, and of course, my nieces, is to be a good example for them as they go out into the world. But I think one of my biggest mentors is Karen Stewart. And I know Karen Stewart helped a number of us, recognizing in us, and I saw Karen recently, and I was able to tell this to her, is recognizing in me what I wasn't recognizing in myself, and invited me in to serve as a leader on a transportation board. And I think that's been the journey of a couple of us up here, is to have that one person that really is the true north, of reaching back and looking and seeing the person that's really quiet in the room, or seeing someone that has a lot of potential, that may not know the ropes, may not know how to navigate, may not know how to promote themselves, and really inviting them into the fold. And that person is Karen Stewart. And I thank her. She is our CDOC Director for our region. She is the former mayor of Broomfield, and she's served in this area of Broomfield and Adams County for a number of decades. As I do on the weekend, I like to watch cooking shows and history biographies also. And what was really profound to me is I watched one of the cooking shows, and it was talking about a woman business entrepreneur that, if you grew up in the 80s and 90s, it was Mrs. Fields Cookies. And it was talking about her journey as a businesswoman. And when she went to go apply for a loan, she was not able to sign for herself. So, this is in the early 1970s. So, it wasn't until 1974, it was really transformational, is that women were able, for the first time, to apply for credit, to apply for home loans. And I remember this story from my mom and from their mortgage company, is they encouraged my mom to put her name first on a bank statement, to have her name listed first on the mortgage. It's because women were not recognized for their credit and were being denied based on gender. So, it's important to that, as we move along, especially in these times, is that we look out for each other, and we look out for women and the accomplishments of policy that has come through many, many generations that could be at risk at any time. And I sat in your seat and said, "That would never happen." And I probably was rolling my eyes, and I was probably bored and looking at my iPhone and saying, "It'll never happen", but things are happening. And I look at where it's a lot, probably not the majority any longer, is really education. And our education field and the dismantling of the Department of Education. And what does that mean for local teachers here in Adams County? What does that mean for our students here in Adams County? And so, I want to, and I'm not up here saying it without a lot of feelings and emotion, is to really thank all of the women for everything you do every single day. And I want to thank my board, remarkable women up here, taking a risk, putting it all out there during the campaign, being constantly on, listening to... We're here to listen to all perspectives, whether we agree with them or not. We're here to govern without prejudice, to put in policy without prejudice. And I really want to thank my Board of County Commissioners and Commissioner Steve Odoricio for being such a great ally to the board. Thank you so much. So, our next item of business this morning is public comment. So, Erica, do you have anything for public comment?
We do have a few people signed up today for the land use cases.
For land use? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak under public comment that may have not signed up? Not seen anybody, so we'll go on to...
Chair, I apologize. I know we all were really thoughtful in our remarks, but I believe the instruction from comms is to take a photo with the proclamation. We can certainly do that later.
Let's do it now, and then we can come back to elected official communications and then the consent calendar. Okay, any elected official communication? Nothing this morning. Consent calendar?
Madam Chair, a second. Who's making?
Hot dance here. I move to approve the consent calendar.
Removal item O, I think, was requested.
Did we already move item O? Okay. Removal of item O.
Oh, we did it on the top.
Yeah, I think it is at the top.
You just click.
Okay.
You did remove item O.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion passes five to zero. So, we are on to new business. County Manager Dave.
Thank you. Our first item of new business is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Bear Communications Inc. in the amount of $1,400,000 for first responder vehicle equipment and light installations. Here to present is Mike Gutierrez. Thank you, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mike Gutierrez, Lead Operations Manager. An RFP was posted on bid net for a vendor to supply and install equipment and lighting on our county first responder vehicles. Bear Communications, Inc., DBA BearCom, was the only vendor to submit a proposal. An evaluation was done on their proposal. BearCom has provided equipment and installation for county vehicles for several years and are very familiar with the required equipment and its configuration. Facilities and fleet management has been very pleased with their services. And we would like to recommend that a new two-year contract be awarded to Bearcom to provide and install equipment and lighting for not to exceed $1,400,000 in the initial contract. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I have a quick question.
Commissioner Henson.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation or bringing this forward. So the 1.4 million, you say that's a not to exceed, so it could come in at a lower number potentially?
We are expecting less.
Okay, and this is for how many vehicles?
So in the first year for 25, we're going to have four, 24 bills.
Okay.
And then our replacement for 26, we're looking at about 26.
26 vehicles?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that's, okay, that's, thank you.
Because it's initially a two-year contract.
Okay. All right, and they're standing by the not to exceed 1.4 for the, for the life of the contract?
Yeah, for the initial two years, yes.
For the, for two years, excuse me, for the two-year contract. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
We're guessing about 700,000 per year.
Very good. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay.
Motion to accept the resolution as presented?
Give it to the button.
Oh.
Or Steve will get it. Second. Oh, Julie got it. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Anything else, County Manager? All right, County Attorney?
Nothing from the County Attorney's Office.
From the County Attorney. No executive sessions. Do we need a minute for land use to be set up? We do. Okay, so let's go ahead and take, it's 9:54. Let's come back at 10 o'clock. Okay, like to go ahead and reconvene the meeting and we're going to go ahead and start with our land use hearing cases. So who do we have? First. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is David Doboski and I'm, I'm here to present the case GCSA Event Center, Conditional Use Full Permit, Full, Use Permit, A Full Barn. And this is for a, a conditional use permit for an event center. And so the applicant is actually requesting a continuance of this case to the May 20th, 2025 BOCC hearing due to added, the, the need for more time to gather more materials for the application. So.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
We do. There's not any questions?
Can we have public comment if anyone came to speak on this?
Yes. If there's anyone that's here to speak regarding the event center, conditional use permit? Erica, not for this particular case?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Anyone in the public audience? Not seeing anyone, so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we continue our CU 2023-1 to May 20th, 25, public hearing. Oops, I forgot, I forgot to hit the button.
It works. It works. And that motion passes five to zero. So the next item.
Good morning. My name is John Stoll. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager of the Community and Economic Development Department. And this is the Dorado and Bowden Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The request is a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation from ag large scale to residential low. This was originally scheduled for the February 27th Planning Commission meeting, but we did not have the required seven voting members available, so we had to continue this. So at this time, staff is recommending a continuance appeal in 2024-00006 to the April 8th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners hearing at 9:30.
Great, thank you. Anyone in the audience that's here to talk to the Dorado and Bowden Comprehensive Plan Amendment? Okay, not seeing any. I'll go ahead and make a motion to continue PLN 2024-6 Dorado and Bowden Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the April 8th, 2025 Board Meeting.
Second.
That passes five to zero. So the next item is the PUD Van Pelt Planned Unit Development Amendment Number Two.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brian Mary and I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. This morning, before I get started with my presentation for the Van Pelt Planned Unit Development Amendment, the applicant has requested to address the, the board in order to request a formal continuance.
Was there a date certain on the continuance?
Hi Chair, this is Jen Rutter, Planning and Development Manager. We just wanted the applicant to make the request and for the board to hear. We can talk about dates if you decide to move forward the continuance.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Amelia Steffen and I'm an attorney at Foster Graham Millstein and Kalsher in Denver, 360 South Gargill Street, here representing the applicant 4300 Hudson Real Estate, Inc. in relation to application PUD 230004 or 002, which is a request for a major amendment to the Van Pelt PUD located at 4300 Hudson Road. This morning, I'd like to request a 30-day continuance for this application until a date certain. This continuance request is made in response to some of the planning commissioners' concerns about pending code violations associated with this property. And the applicant is steadfastly pursuing remedial action on the property to cure these violations. The BOCC last time granted a continuance until today. However, the applicant is requesting a second continuance due to the current status of some of our pending legal actions with some of our tenants. While I can't disclose a lot of details about those legal proceedings because of client confidentiality, I can share that the applicant is attempting to remove tenants who have made it challenging to cure some of these violations. And now we are subject to the Juju Soul Systems timeline for, for getting resolution there. Having resolution will be integral to cleaning up this property and resolving our outstanding code violations. We've been staying in contact with the code enforcement officers on this case to ensure that when we present our application to you, we can concentrate on the actual content of amending the PUD rather than the problems with code violations. So thank you for your time today and thank you to staff and to our code enforcement officers and for their patience in helping us with this application. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm kind of curious, the staff perspective on this continuance. So I know we're going a little out of order for the land use hearing presentation. So Jen, since you spoke up, if you have a comment or someone on staff has a comment on the continuance.
I don't know that staff has a perspective. We, we have continued this case, I believe, since last July from our planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners several times.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Henson and Odoricio.
Thank you. Jen, again, you said this, this has been continued several times since last July. Do, is staff's, what is staff's perspective on progress being made toward a, moving forward on this PUD application?
Staff is recommending approval of the subject request and for Community Economic Development, we, we are not basing our request on the code violations at this time. There are open code violations that were discussed at Planning Commission and we do have some code officers here if you would like to hear from them as well.
I guess my question for the code officers would be if they've, if the applicant has, is working toward, you know, making good progress toward addressing the violations that have, that gave the planning commission some pause.
So I'm going to ask, yeah, I'm going to ask the attorney if this is within our form at this time?
If not, that's fine, right?
Yeah, thank you, Sally.
Sure. I, I think it's okay for you to seek input on whether to grant the continuance, but maybe a question for the commissioners is how many, you know, is 30 days truly enough? And maybe you say, we'll give you one more continuance and make sure you've asked for as much time as you need, but we're really going to do it the next time around kind of thing. But I think it is fair to receive input from the code compliance officers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Morning Commissioners. David Albert, Adams County Code Compliance. I've been in contact and communication with them, been out to the property several times to do some inspections and they have started to make some progress, but there's still a lot that needs to be done. As far as they have a bunch of unlicensed vehicles, they have oversized vehicles, they have a trucking school that's over there and it's all, they need to do a major amendment to the PUD to be able to have all that there.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions for the, for staff? Commissioner Odoricio.
Yeah. Is there, is there an expiration on this application? Is my first question. That's not necessarily for you. It's for either the attorney or the planning staff. And then.
No, Commissioner, there is no expiration. It's pending application and the development standards specifically provide that if an applicant agrees to a continuance that, that's, you know, there's any sort of time limit on in the continuance request.
Okay, so where are we on the enforcement action?
I just continue to grant extensions while the permit process is going on.
And when did that start?
This case been going on for a long time. We, we closed our, our case that we did have open and then we opened up a new case for new violations for the PUD.
Okay, let me ask this question. It sounds like there's two, two subsequent cases and they're, and they're happening consecutively. I would ask, and I understand you may not have enough time, so feel free to go if you have some, a lifeline here to ask the question. When was the first case opened and closed and when was this current case opened? I could look it up too. I know we have like a whole building eye. I'll do that.
Good morning Commissioners. My name's Carrie Grass. I'm a code officer too with the code department here. I started this case years and years ago dealing with this. I started this case years and years ago dealing with this property, longer than two years. We've had, in fact, the people who, the officer that gave me the complaint has now moved on to a different jurisdiction where he's now a supervisor. It's been that long. It's probably been four or five years that we've been dealing with this property. And they make some progress and then they bring in more trucks and junk. And it's filled with, like Dave said, there's vehicles that shouldn't be there. They're doing work in a shop. Their means of warmth is they have a barrel with fire. That's their means of warmth in that shop. So it's a...
I don't know what you're, I couldn't understand what you just said, I'm sorry.
They, in the shop itself, now they've moved into the shop where they're doing all these car, fixing cars and upgrading cars and vehicles and so forth and working on the vehicles. They have a barrel in there that's a fire. That's how they keep it warm in the shop. Did that kind of explain a little better?
Yeah.
It was surprising to me when I walked by and when I drove by and saw the flames.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was just curious about the timing and what's going on.
Yeah, the timing has been years and years on this and, and like Dave said, we closed it at one point and opened it with new violations.
Yeah.
We've had other, the animal control folks have been out there dealing with issues. Now that issue is gone with the chicken fighting. That's gone, right?
Okay, I have a question from Commissioner Pinter as well. So Commissioner?
Thank you. So I think we're all trying to figure out what's going on. And you, in code enforcement and our land use staff and even the applicant probably know a lot more about the details and we're trying to ask the right questions. So what I hear you saying is that there are a number of things that are obvious violations, such as using a barrel where you throw flammable objects and set them on fire as the heat source for the garage. As, you know, this is a standard code violation that's not acceptable. And there's probably a number of other things that you guys have documented. And then I hear the applicant talking about eviction actions and the timeline to get that done. And then I hear planning staff talking about, we've been continuing this in one form or another since July of last year. And I do recall this case coming forward. I'm a little unclear about the fastest path to resolve this. And I'm a little unclear, and I don't know if this is an attorney question or y'all or planning staff. What is our fastest path to eliminate what appears to be ongoing and extensive multi-year health and safety code violations on this property? Is it to have the land use hearing today and make some final decisions? Is it to allow the eviction to complete and then make some land use decisions? What is, and maybe that's an attorney, if y'all want to be like, talk to the lawyers, we can do that. But I need some clarity on the fastest way to resolve what appears to be a multi-use code violation case in addition to the land use question in front of us.
Commissioner Pinter, I hate to see this go on and on and on, but I do appreciate that they've at least started the eviction process. Because I know that there were some people in there and businesses that are not coming into compliance and they're kind of digging in their feet. I think that, to me, that would be the fastest thing is to get this going, that.
This being the land use case?
The land use case and yeah, with their eviction process.
All right.
To extend that.
I saw both Sally and Jen lean forward behind you. Do either of you have a comment? I'm trying to read the body language because it seems like y'all have a lot of information and we just have the information around the continuance.
Yeah, my understanding is that if this PUD amendment is approved, which the staff is recommending approval of, that will cure most all of the outstanding violations. So kicking the can down the road doesn't really help to solve the violations. And certainly to the extent there's some outstanding violations, if even if the PUD amendment is approved, then those can be identified by staff and obviously maybe worked into some conditions of approval.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. Commissioner Odericio.
I, rather than going into an executive session, which could be justified here, which I don't think we need to, I am going to ask. I'm going to ask for an executive session. I'm sorry. I want to get legal advice.
Okay. All right, Sally, can you help us or Doug with the this cover advice statute?
Yeah, we have a general description of
I can take a stab at it, Steve, if you want.
Go for it.
The nature.
I'm confused about the legal status of the county's role in eviction proceedings slash land use code enforcement that I need to have resolved for me to understand the PUD request before us today.
Right, so let's try an executive session pursuant to 246424B for legal advice regarding the county's role with respect to the eviction that we've talked about and, if any, and the impact on the pending land use process.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I also appreciate that if any, and that may be the primary discussion of our time, so I would make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Odericio?
Yeah.
Commissioner Maluka?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca? Yes. So let's go ahead and take, let's do a 15-minute recess while the board goes into executive session and then we'll come back with an update.
Okay, the time is ten thirty six AM. I'd like to reconvene the meeting. We're on land use. This is the Van Pelt's Planned Unit Development Amendment, PUD twenty twenty-three dash two. Commissioner Odoricio.
Madam Chair, I would move to continue this for three to four months. And that three to four months gives time for the applicant to do what the applicant is requesting time to do. I would also ask that the county manager re-initiate the co-compliance enforcement action immediately, or look into it and figure that out. And so we're tired of waiting for consecutive processes here. I am, and I think that we need to get some closure to this, and I don't think that kicking the can down the road one month at a time in a consecutive process works. So I'm going to ask that we continue this if we can find a date in July. That gives time for the issue of the land use to progress, while also allowing the enforcement action to progress too. We're no longer keep, I would recommend that we don't longer keep that on the shelf.
Second. So I see staff talking to the applicant. Does the applicant have anything further to add, respond to?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the reason we asked for this continuance today was not out of, you know, lack of confidence in our land use application. I think it's a great application that will actually solve a lot of the major use zoning violations on the property. But just what we had heard at Planning Commission was it was their stance that they didn't want to kind of establish a process in which people can apply for a land use application to solve violate, to solve other violations. So that's why we kind of took the, took the stance that we should ask for another violation so that we can continue with getting some of our troublemaker tenants removed from the property and then kind of have that clean slate when we present it to you. And so I just wanted to, to explain that to you, and I apologize for the confusion. And I think Brian has some dates certain to that we could continue to.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Really appreciate it.
Commissioner, right now the applicant has agreed that July fifteen is the best date for them to come back for this hearing.
Madam Chair, I'm okay with that if the board is. So my motion would be modified to continue this to July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so I have a motion by Odoricio and a second by Hudson. We can vote. And the continuance passes five to zero. So thank you. Thank you to the applicant for being here. So next item is the Connor pad, Connor pad at one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue.
Good morning, Board. My name is Greg Gamm. The Oil and Gas Administrator for Adams County. I'm here to present two oil and gas facility applications before you. Before I get into the specifics of the Connor pad, I wanted to go over a little bit of the OGF permitting process in Adams County's regulations. So first and foremost, Adams County adopted OGF or Oil and Gas Facility Regulations initially in September of two thousand nineteen. We amended them again in July of two thousand twenty-one after the mission change rulemaking at the Energy and Carbon Management Commission, formerly known as the COGCC. This was in response to the passage of Senate Bill nineteen one eighty-one that gave local governments authority of off-site surface impacts from oil and gas development. Adams County was the first jurisdiction in the state to enact its own regulations in September of two thousand nineteen and the first to amend them after the mission change rulemaking went into effect. This is the very first oil and gas facility application under these revised regulations. The very first of its kind to be approved or even heard at the board or to be submitted to the county. The Connor pad specifically and the Wakeman pad were originally approved under the county's old regulations. It's called the Administrative Use by Special Review or AUSR Process. Those were originally approved in two thousand eighteen, and they essentially expired in two thousand twenty-one because the applicant didn't build the pad or drill the wells. So the facility was never constructed, the wells were never drilled. Therefore, the facility permit from the county and the state expired. The OGF process is three main parts. There's a pre-application, so that's before they even formally submit anything to the county. They do a conceptual review and an alternative location analysis that happens in the pre-process. So they submit three alternative sites. The staff reviews them with our primary referral agents. It would be CPW, that's Collar and Parks and Wildlife, Collar Department of Public Health and the Environment, and the Energy and Carbon Management Commission are all involved in that pre-application process. In that process, we highlight any high-level issues we find off the bat. We talk about process timelines at the county level with the applicant. They are then required to, after the alternative location that is deemed most likely to succeed, that is not in any way a approval, it just says we think of the locations you presented to us, this one has the best chance of success on the merits. And we encourage them to move forward with that site if they would like to formally file an OGF. Before that happens though, they hold a neighborhood meeting for the oil and gas facility. They invite all neighbors, landowners residents within a mile, typically an in-person meeting. We had a couple instances where they were Zoom during the pandemic, but for the most part, they are in person. They have that meeting before they submit their application so they can address some of the initial neighbor concerns before they even file the application with us. Then they submit the development application. There are impact assessment plans. There's twelve to fourteen of them that they have to submit. There's referral and formal public comment. So at this stage, we then send out the formal details to all of our referral agents and all landowners and residents within a mile for public, a formal public comment. Staff does an evaluation of the development applications, and there are recent missions as required, drafting of conditions of approval and the staff report, and that's a back and forth iterative process that can take for the Connor pad, seven months, and for the Wakeman pad took over a year of back and forths just to address referral concern and public comment concern. And then there's a decision. There's an administrative process in our regulations. This happens, this would be approvable by the Director of Community and Economic Development. And that's if the application meets all of our development standards and regulations, performance standards, and requires no waivers that are not administrative. So those are typically minor things, landscaping, stuff like that. Or they come to the Board of County Commissioners for approval at a public hearing. The Planning Commission does not hear OGF cases. So that's just the highlight of the OGF permitting process. And I went through this because again, these are our very first ones for staff. So it took us, it was a learning process for staff, and I'm sure it'll be a learning process for, for the board. And I thank the applicant for patience with us as we worked through how our process actually evolves in practice. So moving forward to the Connor pad, this is OGF twenty twenty-four oh two. It's for the Connor pad at East one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue. The request before you is for an oil and gas facility, OGF, with up to sixteen horizontal wells, one production facility and associated equipment, and one access road. The parcel in question is thirty-nine acre parcel zoned agriculture three. Of that thirty-nine acres, eight point one acres will be disturbed by the oil and gas facility, which will then after drilling and completion be shrunk down to five point seven acres. The applicant is Providence operating, doing business as Poco operating. You might hear be referred to them as Poco or applicant or operator throughout the presentation, one and the same. Poco has approximately sixty-seven active wells across Adams County, the city of Brighton, and Weld County. They're the third largest operator by production in Adams County. They have no open violations with us, no unpaid oil and gas inspection fees, and they are in good standing with the Energy and Carbon Management Commission. So again, I'm bringing, you're hearing the Connor pad first because it has, it requires two waivers, and the Wakeman only requires one, so I brought the Connor pad before you. They're out of sequential order as a type A that kind of rattles my brain, but we're doing two first and one second. The reason we're bringing them both to, today on the same day is because these two facilities are nearly identical. They are almost the exact same size in surface disturbance. They are both for up to sixteen wells. They are the same applicant and the same impact portfolio. So they have the same potential for adverse impacts, so I, we brought them together today. They're actually sited a mile apart from each other along one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue. The wells will be drilling in the north direction. You can see on the, the map on the right side of the screen, these are located around two and a half miles north of Denver International Airport and about two to two and a quarter miles to the east of Bar Lake. You can see the, the two pink boxes there are the, the proposed oil and gas facility before you. For the record, I will be only referring to the Connor pad, OGF twenty twenty-four oh two, just for the sake of clarity of the record. And then we'll hear the Wakeman after as a separate case. Here are some site photos of the proposed location. This is looking north and east and south and west. You can see this is a very agricultural area, very rural and largely undeveloped in the immediate area surrounding the proposed site. This is a current zoning map. Again, this subject property is zoned agriculture three with agriculture two parcels to the south. Our development standards and regulations allow for oil and gas facilities on parcels zoned A two, A three, C zero through C five, and I one through I three. So this does not require any waiver from our, our zoning requirements. I will note that all the A two parcels to the south were former homes that were purchased by Denver and torn down and demolished because this area is within the airport noise and height overlays. So all those are owned by the city of Denver. As you are aware, the airport noise and airport height overlay disincentivize residential construction and in some cases prohibits the division of property for residential development. Future land use in this area is zoned for agriculture large scale based on the two thousand twenty-two Adams County Comprehensive Plan on the subject parcel and multi-use commercial on the parcels to the south. Again, these future land use designations are compatible with the co-location of oil and gas uses per our development standards and regulations. This is a site plan of the Connor pad, the production, this is a, the site plan. So the dashed red line would be the maximum disturbance area and the green of eight point one acres. The green is the reclaimed area after the wells are drilled and completed. So once they're in production mode, the site will shrink down to the, to the green outline. There will be permanent equipment on the location, of course. That will include sixteen, up to sixteen wellheads, one for each well, two produce water tanks, two crude oil and condensate tanks, and eighteen other pieces of equipment that you find very commonly on modern oil and gas development sites. The access road is also denoted in pink and will be located in a partially in the county right-of-way along East one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue. So there are twelve criteria of approval for an oil and gas facility in the development standards and regulations. I won't read through all of them. They are all detailed in the staff report, and we go one by one on how, in staff's recommendation, the merits of this application meet those criteria of approval. I will just note that generally speaking, the OGF has to be consistent with the purposes and standards of the regulations and that all potential adverse impacts, off-site impacts to public health, safety, welfare, the environment, and wildlife resources are addressed either through facility design considerations, conditions of approval, or best management practices. So let's quickly. There is a standard in our regulation called substantially equivalent determinations. And this is a requirement, a standard that must be met or found by the Board of County Commissioners if there's a waiver, a non-administrative waiver requested at the application. There are two for the Connor pad. In granting waivers from setback requirements, the board must determine if the OGF demonstrates substantially equivalent protections that are equal to or more effective to avoid, minimize, and mitigate potential adverse impacts. In making that determination, the board may consider the BMPs, control measures and technologies in facility design, the location, nature, and size of the facility, and the proximity of receptors, the duration and intensity of operations, compatibility with surrounding and future land use, and the level of consent or waivers obtained from landowners or residents within the setback. I will note that all proposed best management practices and mitigation measures that you'll see on the forthcoming slides are required and enforceable by the county and are incorporated into various conditions of approval. These are not suggestions made by the county or the applicant. These are, are enforceable regulations that will be put in place on this specific application. It is staff's opinion to recommend approval of the two waivers for this OGF because in our determination, the applicant has demonstrated substantially equivalent protections. The next handful of slides will go through why staff believes that the, that standard has been met. So first, jumping into setbacks, like I mentioned, the Connor pad requires two setbacks. One for environmentally sensitive areas. This one, Adams County's regulations have a two thousand foot setback from any new oil and gas facility to what we deem environmentally sensitive area. That would be surface waters, rivers, lakes, streams, things like that. Administrative waivers to environmentally sensitive areas are not allowed in our code. So because of the presence of an environmentally sensitive area, they have to come in front of the board to get approval of the waiver and the application together. There is an unnamed ditch that runs along the northeast corner of the proposed facility. You can see on the, on the aerial image, the pink box is the outline of the Connor pad. You can see a little bit of a corner of the unnamed ditch that runs along the northeast corner. This feature is not a designated wetland or jurisdictional wetland. It is not a high priority habitat and is not within our natural resource conservation overlay district. It's also been substantially altered by agricultural activity and residential development up and down ditch. So essentially, it's more of a technicality. You can see a picture of the ditch on the photo here. This is from the environmental assessment that Adams County required because of the presence of this, of this feature. And I will note that the applicant has already obtained a waiver from CPW for aquatic species habitat because again, it's classified in that way at the state level, but you can see it's not an aquatic habitat. But they did receive a waiver from CPW for the aquatic habitat. I will note that the applicant has also proposed as a, as a, as an extra added measure, additional drainage around the outside of the facility in the event that any discharge or stormwater were to run off the location. They added additional drainage around the outside of the pad. And then they also are required to put in additional drainage ditches or drainage control basins on the facility in the unlikely event that there was some sort of stormwater or discharge, just because of the presence of this unnamed ditch feature. The other setback requirement that is also requiring a waiver would be those from residential building units. So again, we have a 2,000 foot setback from new OGFs to residences, schools, childcare centers. And we measure that from the edge of the parcel or edge of the pad to the parcel containing a residential use. So that differs from the state because the state measures from the edge of the pad to the physical home. So then that way our setbacks are actually more protective than the state's standards. We added this provision into our regulations, A for ease of application. So we're not trying to discern, is that a barn? Is that a, is that a horse stable or is it a house? It doesn't matter if there's a residential use on the property, it triggers that added level of review by staff and requires them to get consent or Board of County Commissioner approval of a waiver. Administrative waivers are possible for residential building units, not from schools, but from residential building units, if they can obtain 100% consent. For this application, there are four consents that are required because there are four properties that contain residential uses within 2,000 feet. I will note that there are zero actual homes within 2,000 feet. It's just that the parcel it hits contains a home, therefore there are four. They obtained one of four consents. I will note they also have the surface owners, the surface owner's consent that property is undeveloped. And I will note that one of the other homes within 2,000 feet, the home is abandoned. So they were not able to make contact with the, the surface owner to get their consent. On the map, on the screen here is a map of that 2,000 foot setback. You can see the four residence, residential building unit properties that are within that setback. And the levels of consent are on the table there and are also included in, as an exhibit in the staff report. Moving on, noise. As you are very well aware, noise is one of the, the biggest issues we, we received from oil and gas development in Adams County. The applicant was required to conduct an ambient noise study in the area and submit a noise mitigation plan that addressed both high and low frequency noise. So that'd be DBA and DBC during drilling and fracking operations. DBA noise is like loud noise you hear banging, clanging. That would be noise you hear. That's DBA, that's, that's high frequency. And then DBC low frequency is often reported as noise you can feel. People often report vibration and in reality it's not, it's just a low frequency hum. Think of like a bass on a cover. They were, they were required to conduct an ambient background noise of both of those and mitigation noise plan for both A and C scale noise. It was determined during the submission and review of that noise mitigation plan that noise mitigation measures were going to be required at this application to comply with our standards and with state regulations for noise. The modeled mitigated noise levels with the best management practices applied reduced noise levels at the nearest receptor by 10 or more decibels, well below the allowable limits. I will note that this area is also already in the airport noise overlay district. So the ambient background noise is already elevated. And so they are actually anticipating that with mitigation measures, noise will actually be at background because of the elevated level. So the, the noise levels will not increase during drilling and fracking from this facility. The mitigation and BMPs that are being required at this application would be the use of electric drilling rigs. They're also, we're going to be required to institute 32 foot sound walls around the perimeter of the site during drilling and completions. They also have to have background noise monitors in the direction of the closest residences to ensure compliance during pre-application. You can see the two noise images, that's from the data submitted by the applicant. The upper, the upper image is the unmitigated noise and you can see the nearest receptor is highlighted there. They anticipate DBA drilling will be 53 decibels during, if it was unmitigated. And with mitigation measures include, and this doesn't even include the electric drilling rigs, this is just the sound walls will reduce noise to 43 decibels at the nearest receptor. Electric drilling rigs will further reduce that noise level on top of that. Traffic is another big issue we always get. So this application was required to submit a traffic impact study that was reviewed by Development Engineering and Public Works through a separate engineering review. So that'd be ETR 2024-034. They were required to, oh, they had to submit that engineering study that included haul routes, access points, things like that were part of the traffic impact study. It was determined through that study that estimated truck trips and vehicle weights, that no roadway improvements were required for the use of the haul routes being proposed and that the haul routes were deemed suitable and avoided weight restricted roads and bridges. I will note that the haul routes on the map here, Tower Road, 128th, Haysmont and Gun Club, they are the only haul routes that will be allowed to be used by this applicant for the, the development of the Connor pad. They are not allowed to drive on any other roads that they deem appropriate or necessary. They have to follow the haul routes as outlined on the map here. I will note we got several public comments with concerns about traffic. And there was some reference and maybe some confusion on the part of some of those comments that maximum vehicle truck trips would be 232 truck trips per day for the life of the project that, that would only be during flowback. So that's the, obviously when the wells are initially starting to produce. So you'll get a lot of crude oil, a lot of produced water all at once as the wells are recently fracked. And so that's when a lot of the trucks will be the most that's, but that's only three to five weeks of the development of the application. Once the wells go into production, the truck trips per day drop from, to three to six. That would be for the life of the well until the wells are plugged, typically 10 to 12 years. So there are traffic impacts, but typically they're very short-lived during the drilling completions and flowback stages, and then they drop off precipitously after that. I will also note that this applicant will be required to remit a traffic impact fee specifically for oil and gas related impacts to county roads of $314,721 for the development of this facility. That traffic impact fee must be fully paid before the, the construction on the pad even begins. And that is, goes into a separate account that is used solely for construction or maintenance and upkeep of county roads impacted by oil and gas development. Additionally, air quality is always a concern. So there are some mitigation and best management practices that will be required of this applicant on their county permit. The operator will be required to obtain county approval of an air quality monitoring plan prior to any ground disturbing activities that will be more protective than the state's standard. The plan to be approved by the county may include longer background ambient air quality measurement times, additional air quality monitors and sensors being placed around the outside of the facility, the measurement and sampling of additional emissions and prolonged continuous monitoring during the production phase. We have our air quality program specialist in the audience have questions about that, Dr. Taya Stockman. The county is also implementing recommended best management practices on this application that were, that derived from the consultation we had with Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment into conditions of approval. So CDPHG is a non-regulatory body in that way, doesn't have the authority to require their best management practices. We took their recommendations and made them requirements. So now they are enforceable regulations at the county level. So it adds a extra level of protection on top of already state standards. This would include non-emitting pneumatic controllers, the use of tier four or natural gas tier two with battery assist engines during hydraulic fracturing. So to reduce emissions and odor and noise, closed loop drilling systems and mitigation or delaying of certain activities during forecasted high ozone days. The operator will also be, be required to utilize electric drilling rigs. Again, I brought those up during noise, but also the use of electric drilling rigs serve a dual purpose in that emissions drop off significantly with the use of electric drilling rigs and that is a requirement and the condition of approval. They have to use pipelines to take crude oil and natural gas away from this facility. So that reduces emissions and truck traffic on county roads. They have to use group three, low emitting or non-emitting odorless drilling fluid that reduces emissions from drilling muds and it also reduces odor. And then they have to have the facility to be shut in if the pipeline goes offline. So for any reason, the crude oil or natural gas pipeline goes down for maintenance or upkeep or repair, they have to shut their wells in until the pipelines can come back online. They can't truck oil or gas away from the facility. And those are measures added in addition to state and county regulations. Other impacts, of course, there are other potential adverse impacts from oil and gas development. The applicant submitted 12 mitigation and impact assessment plans that demonstrate compliance with our development standards and regulation that avoid, minimize and mitigate the potential for offsite adverse impacts. In addition to the ones I've already touched on, they also did a visual aesthetics and landscaping plan, emergency preparedness and spill prevention and response plan, accumulative impacts plan, water quality and protection plan, stormwater and drainage and community outreach and engagement plans. Specifically for water quality and protection, the operator will be required to implement water source sampling and testing protocols that include offering to sample all available water wells and sources within one half mile of the facility. They will also have to sample at least one up gradient and two down gradient water sources within a mile of the facility. Sampling of water wells will include at a minimum, an initial baseline of samples prior to commencement of drilling and completions. They'll have to do post stimulation or post fracking samples of the same water wells. And then they'll have to do intermittent sampling of water wells from six months to six years after completions to again, prove compliance and demonstrate that water quality has not degraded. So referral comments, we sent 70 referral comments to all homeowners, property owners, tenants within one mile of the oil and gas facility. We received three public comments. Two of those comments were opposed and one was a general question and concern. Those concerns, as I alluded to already, included traffic and road conditions, upkeep and safety, public health concerns, noise, dust and odor, water quality, and then just general opposition to oil and gas development largely. The applicant, as I also spoke to, submitted a community outreach plan as a requirement in Adams County that is above what the state requires for community outreach. We require continual engagement with the community as opposed to a one-time pre-application engagement. So they did conduct the initial pre-application neighborhood meeting, but they also be required to conduct quarterly neighborhood meetings with residents within one mile from the time of approval of the county permit up until they're done drilling the wells. The also operator will also have to send written notices to all landowners and primary residents within that one mile at the start of each phase. So construction, drilling and completions operations. Obviously we sent all these to, all the common referral agencies, we, including RTD, United Power and Excel responded with no concern. We had some general comments and qualifications that were addressed through the review and subsequent re submissions of their applications from Denver and DIA, CDPHG, CPW and the Energy and Carbon Management Commission. And we included those as BMPs, including the ones from CPW around the high priority, the aquatic species habitat for the, the drainage feature and from CDPHG for air quality. And those are already incorporated into all the conditions of approval. So therefore staff is recommending approval of OGF 2024-02 for the Connor pad at East 136th with 12 findings of fact, two waivers, seven conditions precedent, 26 conditions of approval and two notes. I won't go through again, all the findings of fact, again, that the OGF is consistent with the standards and that it addresses all potential for adverse impact. Those are all detailed in the staff report. The two waivers, I'll highlight them again, they need a waiver from environmentally sensitive areas, that would be waiver number two, and they need a waiver from the Board of County Commissioners for residential setback requirements. And again, that's 2,000 feet. Those are the two require, two waivers required. Conditions precedent, these are conditions that are required before they can start construction of the facility. They have to get a notice to proceed from the Director of Community and Economic Development once they demonstrate that these seven conditions of precedent have been met. I'll highlight a couple of them just to draw your attention to them. Condition of precedent number two, that's the traffic impact fee of 314,721 is required before they start construction. They have to pay it regardless of how many wells they drill. That would be the fee that is owed. And then condition of, condition of precedent number three, that's the applicant getting approval of an air quality monitoring plan. They have to get state approval already, but they have to get county approval of an air quality monitoring plan that will be more stringent than state standards. Condition of approval, there are 26 of them. I won't go through all of them. I'll just call out a few of them. Condition of approval number one is for the haul routes. Again, these are the only haul routes they're able to use. They can't drive willy nilly on any roads they want. Condition number six, this is the requirement for the electric drilling rigs. This states that if the grid becomes unavailable for some reason, they have to stop drilling. They can't just say, oh, whoopsie, the grid went down, we'll keep going. They have to stop until the grid power becomes available again, with some caveats there for safety. Condition number seven is the requirement for a pipeline and a requirement outlining if the pipeline goes down, they have to shut the wells in until the pipeline becomes available again. Condition number 12 here, that's the water well testing requirement that I outlined a little bit in the other impact section. Condition number 20, this is the, this is the condition of approval incorporating all the recommendations from CDPHG as requirements of the county permit. So this is condition number 20. And then condition number 23, I'll call your attention to the permit term. In 2021, we changed our regulations as I talked about earlier. Under the old AUSR regulations, drilling one well permanently vested their county approval forever. That changed when we adopted, we amended our regulations. They have three years. At the end of three years, whatever wells are not drilled and completed by then expire. And so if they want to drill eight and then in three years, the, the permit expires, they have to come back for an entirely new permit to drill the other wells if they don't meet this three-year obligation. So again, those are the other two conditions. The notes are just that they'll get any building or zoning or health code regulations and that they cannot add any equipment to the location that's not already in the application. They can't add additional onsite liquid storage. They can't add any additional equipment without an amended permit. If it's deemed minor amendment, like swapping out diesel engine for an electric engine, we would view that as minor. That could be an administrative approval, something more major like increasing liquid storage, like adding more tanks would be a major amendment that would require the board to hear that application. So again, I'll just end on this one. Staff is recommending approval of this case and I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you so much. So the land use process is a staff presentation. Thank you so much, Greg. It comes back to the board for questions. Then the applicant will do a presentation. The board will have an opportunity to ask the applicant questions. Then we'll call for public comments. So we'll have Erica call for public comment. At that time, I will also ask, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak. The applicant will have an opportunity to respond. We'll come back to the board for discussion and then we'll have a motion. So we're at the point in the land use process that it's questions for the board for staff. Commissioner Mulcahy and then Pinter.
Yeah, I have a quick question about the traffic analysis. And I understand that we're, we're looking at these two pads separately, but traffic, I, I guess my question is around, are, is the flowback period where the most traffic, traffic is going to be impacted, is that occurring at the same time for both sites?
Thank you for that question. I'll let the applicant discuss timelines. I will note that one thing I failed to mention here is that the haul routes for the Connor and the Wakeman are completely separate. So as part of the traffic impact assessment, because these applications were submitted almost in tandem with each other. So we review them together to help reduce cumulative impacts from the facility. The haul routes for the Connor are not the same haul routes for the Wakeman.
Okay, so the traffic impacts won't be overlapping.
Correct. So even if they were to drill them simultaneously, they're not using the same routes. And I failed to mention that. And the Wakeman, you'll see the haul route maps are different. The Wakeman's using Pahaton and 152nd. Whereas this one's using 128th and Haysmont. So even if they were together, they wouldn't be on the same roads at the same time.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Great, thank you. So Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to return to the part of the presentation with regard to the unnamed ditch. I don't, we can navigate on there on screen or we can, there we go. Okay. So I went back to reread the materials and then thinking about your presentation. I see from the materials provided that what you meant on the agricultural activities is that the ditch does not clearly flow in either direction because the surrounding agricultural land has altered the landscape so much that there isn't a clear flow path. But I think what I was a little confused by, didn't find an answer in the materials is what mitigations are being done on the pad site in some of our more historic flooding events that unfortunately have become quite common in this part of the United States where I can't say when, but we have these not just hundred year floods, but thousand year floods and really disruptive events. And so what is the, I think it was called a swale that's being provided or proposed on the pad site by the applicant to prevent in one of these larger flow storm situations, water flow storm situations?
Yeah, thank you for that question. And I'll let the applicant, I think their presentation goes into a little more detail specifically on that very question. I will note you can, it's hard to tell on this is a very detailed site plan they submitted. They are putting secondary drainage around the perimeter of the facility. So any stormwater that would flow off the location to the north or east into near that feature then gets channeled around the outside of the facility specifically for those highest flooding events. And then they also have secondary onsite drainage for stormwater in, again, the unlikely in, again, the unlikely event or maybe likely event of those thousand-year, two, two thousand-year floods that might occur. Um those are in addition to what they would normally put on an oil and gas facility. So there are secondary catchments um for stormwater on or near the site specifically for stormwater that runs off the pad. Um those, I believe, and again, I'll let the applicant speak to it, I believe the flow direction is to the south as well, so any stormwater or rain that falls on the facility will flow away from that environmental feature.
Okay, so is to protect the canals that aren't that far away and or Bar Lake and some of the other things that are protected environmentally.
Correct, so this um this drainage is unnamed, but um in the highest possible floods, the environmental assessment did say that there could be some indirect flow into a ditch that does lead into Bar Lake. It wouldn't be directly into Bar Lake, it would be an indirect flow during the highest possible flood um across the two miles. It's, like I said, it's two miles from Bar Lake.
The Denver Hudson Canal?
Yes, correct. So that's the name of the canal. It could potentially flow indirectly into Denver Hudson Canal.
Okay.
During the highest possible stormwater. But again, the um farmer on the, the tenant farmer on the surface has also altered the drainage ditch for agricultural purposes. In fact, they planted over it. Um and so that's what I mean by substantially altered. And then there's obviously some residential development to the south and east um that also altered the drainage feature to build homes.
Okay, all right, um that's helpful.
That answer your question?
That, that does answer my question. I mean, I think that I will reserve to hear also the applicant's presentation if they're going to get into this because I, you know, in my youth, it was like, oh, there's a thunderstorm at four P M every day in Colorado and it just sort of moves through and it's twenty minutes and we all move on. But I feel like that pattern of my youth that we came to expect is no longer here and we have more erratic and more significant storms that have a higher volume. So I think it's unfortunately part of our, our new normal moving forward. Um I do also have some questions about only getting a waiver or consent from one of the four residential um impacted parcels, but I also understand this is a unique area given the high noise and land use um conditions uh because of Denver International Airport. So I am looking forward to more discussion about that particular piece where normally we have a conversation and we would expect all four um uh neighbors that are within the two thousand feet to have consent. So I, that's just an open question for me and I don't know if you have any additional comments that you didn't cover in your presentation.
Yeah, I can add some, some additional clarity, but I would defer to the applicant to discuss their community outreach specifically with those four um landowners. The one, again, number two on the map here, um that home is boarded up and abandoned and so they had a hard time getting access to that one. Um I will note that only one of the four submitted a public comment in opposition. So number three, signed consent. Number two, they couldn't make contact. And number one, did not provide any comment to the county uh in opposition or in favor, and they certainly did not sign the consent. Um but we didn't hear from um resident number one. So the only one in opposition is resident number four.
Good, thank you.
Okay, next I have uh Henson and then Commissioner Molika.
Thank you. Uh thank you for the presentation. Uh my question is about the traffic impact fee. Uh I don't know, I, I I'm assuming staff obviously has a formula for this. Are we confident that three hundred, the three hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars will cover any, what will cover? Because this is a lot, this still looks like a lot of roadway that's going to be used uh impacted by this pad production. Do we feel that, are we confident that's enough to, to re- repair any damage from the activity of this pad?
I can speak a little bit to it and then I can defer to um either Jen or, we have our development engineer here who reviewed the traffic impact plan, Lori Clark. Um I will note that uh this money goes into a separate account, which I think the current balance is around five point nine million dollars.
Okay.
Um for upkeep specifically. So we've been collecting them from a lot of oil and gas facilities around the county and they go into a special fee. Um so it's not necessarily specifically to this haul route necessarily that, and it's any road that any road that oil and gas traffic frequents, we're able to use for upkeep and maintenance.
So we have that entire pot of money, so pooled, so to, so to speak to, okay, okay.
And then I will defer to either Sally or Jen or Lori um on but whether it's adequate.
Thank you.
Sure, I can, I can speak a little bit to that. Um back in twenty nineteen, there was a traffic impact uh analysis done to establish a new oil and gas road maintenance fee for the county. It was done um at the same time as our original traffic impact uh fee review in twenty nineteen. Um so there was account, it was taken into account the, the current state of the roadways at the time um as well as the, you know, whether it's a dirt road or a paved road where oil and gas would be likely, where it would be unlikely. And so there, there was a formula developed. Um and this is based on a formula. Um and as, and you're right, there, there is a, a lot more to it than just um kind of guest, guestimating numbers. There's uh we take into account whether there's pipelines, what kind of pipelines there are, whether it's for um natural gas, for oil, for produced water. In this case, they are, they are having um some pipelines. Um so they do get a discount for, for road impacts on that, but they, we do understand that there are going to be impacts regardless to a, any type of facility like this.
Thank you. And has the, have those numbers or has that formula been updated to twenty twenty-five uh for cost of inflation or materials, things like that? You said this formula was established in twenty nineteen?
Right, so um we have not updated that. That was not part of the scope of our current traffic impact fee update. As you guys recall, um we are currently updating our traffic impact fees. We're, we're doing a study right now.
Yeah.
We'll bring that to you later this year. Oil and gas road maintenance fees were not a part of that study.
Okay, thank you for that information. And I have another question. So future land use designation or, or this is designated agriculture large scale, I believe. So my question is what the reclaimed five point seven acres at the end of the life of this pad, what happens to those reclaimed acres? What are they? How can they be used or what do they become? Can they, what can they become?
Uh that is a great question. Typically, because it's agriculture large scale, the reclaimed area you can see is um around the southern side of the pad. They could plant it for agricultural uses or they could grow native grasses. It could be used for screening or shielding. Um typically, these will probably be too close for any, and again, this is the Noe's overlay district, so they couldn't build homes there anyway. Um but typically, it would be used for planting of agriculture.
Okay, and then, well, and then what about the active site? So where the wellheads are, that it?
That will be permanently developed so uh with uh crushed gravel.
Okay.
And the equipment. And then once the wells are plugged and reclaimed, the um setback will shrink down to around a hundred feet around the, just the wellhead. So on the, the, the items labeled wellheads, once the wells are, are done and they reclaim the facility, plug and reclaim, all the permanent equipment will be removed. All the fencing will be removed, all the landscaping will be removed. And the only thing that will be left is the wellheads. They'll be um buried below grade. Um and then there'll just be a county reverse setback for future development of a hundred feet.
All right, th- thank you. And then lastly, uh what is the, do we know what the active, the expected active lifespan is of these wells?
I'll let the applicant speak specifically.
That's fine, yeah, I'm not exactly sure.
Ten to fifteen years.
All right, thank you very much. Those are my questions for now.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Molika.
Yeah, I had a quick question about um the quarterly neighborhood meetings that are um you know supposed to be uh occurring with this. Um are there required requirements in what is shared during those quarterly neighborhood meetings? So for example, any of the results that we're getting from the noise, air or water testing, is, is that information supposed to, like, is that required to go to the nearby residents at any point in time and or is there any requirements around what's discussed during the quarterly meetings? I'm just curious.
Yeah, there are regulations. I, I didn't put them on the slide just to keep it a little clean, but they are required to talk about all of that with the residents during that neighborhood meeting. I will also note that any noise data, um maybe not water data, because I'm not, I'm familiar with the DWR restrictions on private water wells. So any public water sampling results are fair game. It's a little less clear about private water well data. I don't know, and I just, I just don't know the answer to, to that question. But any noise or odor data, any violations or rules like that are all public record, because pretty much everything the county does is public record. So any noise complaints, any noise data um that the county's requested is all public record and can be um brought up during the neighborhood meetings. And typically, a staff member will be present at those neighborhood meetings.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so I've been present to every single one of them. Um we also have our two oil and gas inspectors that sometime attend, sometimes attend those as well.
Okay, oh, that's fantastic. Um okay, that answers, answers my question. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Odoricio?
Um I just have a question about the um, I know Emma asked about the wetland uh concern and then the ditch. Um I still, uh I'm still trying to understand that the distinction between um that the trigger of, of, of potential like Waters of the U S type discussion at the state level. And this would be through the um CCMC, right, or the um?
Yeah, the ECMC?
ECMC, I'm sorry. Yes, ECMC rather than through CDPHE because it's dealing with.
That's correct. Anything water specific will be addressed through ECMC or potentially the Division of Water Resources depending. None of, this is not classified as a water of the state or um this feature is not classified as a water of the state in the same way that like a river would be um for that type of review. Is that what you're getting at?
We have that in writing that, that they that agency has declared for us that this is ex- not considered a water of the state.
Can't recall that off the top of my head, I apologize.
It's got a few hundred pages of stuff to look through.
Seven hundred and thirty-four to be.
I understand.
Uh maybe that's, maybe that's something we could put on the shelf. Environmental assessment, I.
Yeah, maybe that could go on the shelf for now, the question, and then come back to it later. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, um then we'll ask the applicant to come down and if you can state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh Megan Grimes with Poco Operating. Did you ask her address as well? Fifty-eight Preserve Drive, uh Fort Morgan, Colorado. I want to thank uh Adams County staff for their collaborative efforts in bringing this application forward today. It's been um a long road and we've uh been happy to work together and through that process and new procedures with Greg and his staff. So I'm excited to be here to present to you today. Uh Greg did such an amazing comprehensive presentation. I want to um kind of limit redundancies and so my presentation will be a little bit shorter. I want to address kind of specific things that Poco does that are above and beyond um what's being asked in uh regulations. So we'll jump in here. Um I do have some other folks with me today from Poco, um our VP of Operations, Stephen Brown, our VP of Land, Allison Boyce, Andrea Gross is a consultant that helps us with permitting, and then our outside counsel is here as well, Brian Chicken. Um I will do most of the presentation myself, but I may look to them for some uh feedback on specific questions. Just a general outline of the things I'll talk about. We want to give kind of just a high-level overview of, of the pad um location and just uh background information. Also want to talk about our process and timeline with uh Adams County and ECMC. A little bit about our community outreach and some of these RBUs that um came up in discussion in the first presentation. Um our development timeline and then um want to focus in really on our CDPHE consultation and um Poco's best management practices. Um we'll also talk about haul routes and traffic. Um again, since there are two applications that are very similar, um this one is for the Connor. Uh but I will show that overlaid map with Connor and Wakeman traffic and haul routes. So um just so that those aren't confused, but they're clearly identified and we'll talk about it when we get there. Um we'll also talk about where the water's coming from for these operations, how much we plan to use. And then I'll dig a little bit more into the stormwater site plan um and talk about where that water goes. Um and then lastly, we'll finish up with a discussion about our facility design. I'll have our VP of Operations um talk to you about how that works and why ours is um relatively unique and minimizes impacts. And then we'll finish up with a summary. So as you know, we are Providence Energy doing business with Poco Operating. Um we are headquartered in Dallas. However, all of your operations team and all the people that are here today uh live and work in Denver, Colorado um or suburbs thereof. Uh Poco maintains all financial assurance, insurance and operator clearance with Adams County and ECMC. Um I just wanted to highlight the level of insurance that we um keep on, on, on record with ECMC. Um twenty-one million dollars in liability insurance ver- uh varieties of liability insurance. And we're also um, we have financial assurance of one point three million dollars with ECMC currently, and that adjusts up or down based on number of active wells and approved permits. So that's where we're at today, but that could go up, it could go down just depending on what the state requires. Um let's see, okay, just a quick overview of the Connor. Um this is a new location, but as Greg mentioned, it's a a renewal of sorts. This was a pad that was approved um under old rules at Adams County and at the uh state when it was COGCC. Um this is uh you, you can see the unit on the map here. This is um drilling and spacing unit of twenty, uh twenty-one hundred acres roughly. And the OGDP, which is the state's reference to the surface and the unit, um the surface is within that unit. Uh roughly eight acres during drilling, construction, completion and flowback. And then that's minimized at interim reclamation to uh five point six five acres. Um and this is a sixteen-well pad being proposed. Nearest cross streets are East one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue and Gun Club. And uh there are four RBUs within two thousand feet of the working pad surface, that is to the parcel line, um not to the RBU itself. This application doesn't trigger high priority habitat or floodplain requirements. Um it is not in a DIC disproportionately impacted community. Um and an ALA is not required or triggered um under ECMC Rule three oh four B two B. So just a little ti- a bit about the timeline um of this process. As Greg kind of alluded to, it, it took some time to get through as we're all learning the new rules and procedures. Um but we did host a combined neighborhood meeting um on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. That was for the Connor and Wakeman pads both. We did that because they are so analogous and the neighbors are similar um just in the overlapping buffer. So we hosted those together. Um and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to community outreach. Our permit was actually submitted in June last year. Um we received comments back in August from Adams County staff. And then we were able to resubmit our application with amendments in October. And then we are here today uh for a hearing. And then we also are on uh the ECMC's hearing schedule for an April twenty-third hearing um dependent on the outcome of today's hearing. So I, I talked a little bit about this already. Um we hosted our uh neighborhood outreach uh community meeting at Flat Rock Regional Training Facility in October of twenty twenty-two. There was Poco staff um available at that meeting, uh myself. Um land and operations staff were all present to talk with uh residents as well as answer questions. Um Adams County had Greg Dean present, and then we did have three people show up for the meeting, um two households um total. Uh all parcel owners within one mile of the location were invited to attend and um discussion topics included road improvements, royalty payments and noise impacts. This map looks similar to what you've seen from um the previous presentation as well, so I won't belabor the point. Um but did want to point out that um we do have one uh informed consent signed as well as the abandoned house. Uh extensive efforts were made to find someone we could speak to. Um unfortunately, we just couldn't make contact with anyone. But we did confirm that the house is boarded and there's no one living um in it. Also had confirmation from neighbors across the street that no one has ever lived in that house or been around the house. So not sure where they're at, but we did our best to find them. Um and then ultimately, two of the RBU um owners decided not to uh sign informed consent citing concerns about dust and noise um and light, but those uh issues we feel we can address through BMPs. I want to start this slide with a caveat that this is just a proposed timeline. Things shift obviously dependent on approvals at other agencies. We still, you know, assuming um assuming this is approved in Adams County, we still have to get a state approval as well as air permits and um individual well permits uh for each well. And so we expect that to take part of the rest, most of the rest of this year to get through that process. So um it looks like we're kind of pushing this out a little bit, assuming there's an approval today, but really we anticipate uh quite a bit more time in the regulatory permitting process. So um our, our approach is to do this in a phased way. Um preference for Poco is to do kind of half of the wells first and then come back and do half of the wells later. And so that's what you see in this timeline, starting in Q two twenty twenty-six. Some of that is driven on uh regulation, so um the commitment to use a drilling, electric drilling. So um the commitment to use a drilling, electric drilling rig, something Poco's happy to do, but it is um limited by the availability availability of grid power. And so we've we've had experience with that with United Power at our Brighton Lakes pad, which you guys can see um out of the windows of your county building here. It's just off of one hundred and thirty-six and Buckley. Um so uh United Power or any power provider, they give you kind of a window and blackout dates for when the grid could provide enough power to run an electric drilling rig. And so we're limited in some ways um as to when that can happen. So this timeline is a good estimate, but know that it could shift depending on the availability of power. The other thing that's a contingency here is the availability of uh drilling rigs that are capable of running on electric high-line power. And um frac fleets as well. And then I've already talked about the approval of ECMC's OGDP and APDs and how that might affect our timeline. Poco had a con- consultation with CDPHG with Tessa Sorenson um at the beginning of March this year. And um we agreed to twenty-six BMPs. They're all listed there and I will not, I won't read them all out for you. I'm sure you've had time to kind of review them and I'm happy to answer questions if you have any specifically. But I would highlight um the electric drilling rig is obviously kind of a a big item. It reduces uh noise and emissions if we can commit to that. So um we're happy to do that and we do that on all of our applications. Um we're also using group three drilling fluids, which reduces emissions and odors. Um and then some other things near the bottom that I would highlight that are not required by CDPHG, but um kind of nice to have are these reductions on high ozone days like um eliminating the use of uh certain types of paints and solvents on a high ozone day. Those are um things that we're happy to do to minimize emissions and impacts during those high ozone months. Okay, a couple of things that I want to really highlight about Poco that are maybe different from other applications you've heard or will hear. We in- we endeavored to go through a process with a company called Project Canary called Trust Trustwell. It's an environmental assessment put on by a third-party company um to do kind of a holistic look at Poco as a company and their operations as they relate to air, water, land and community. And so um some of those uh six hundred plus data points that you see there um that were evaluated. They look at things like our um OGI and Eldar testing and um the intervals at which those are conducted. Um they look at uh our uh methane intensity and um uh things like that. What I would point out in the Poco at a glance section in the top left here or top right, sorry, um is that Poco not only came in low on methane intensity, but insanely low, really. Um the threshold is point two percent and Poco is at point zero three percent. So um we're really doing a lot through technology and BMPs to minimize those impacts. This is a process that we'll continue to go through, whether it's through this company or others. Um we like the third-party evaluation um is kind of a um sounding board for how we're doing. Another technology that we've implemented on our locations and will continue to do so is Clean Connect AI. This is a real-time um OGI camera that uh does leak detection and repair. Um so we have a dashboard that is accessible to us uh remotely. Uh we get alerts if there's a leak detected and we're able to identify those visually. Um and then uh send lease operators to fix those in real time. And so we're we're minimizing the amount of leaks um as they occur by effectively correcting them in in real time. Um some other things that this technology can do um is PPE detection. We get alerts if there's people on location without hard hats. And um it's very, very good at doing this. It catches people as they get out of their cars and sends us an alert that they're not wearing a hard hat yet. Flame and smoke detection, this is critical in kind of emergency situations. So not only do we have boots on the ground, but we're able to get those alerts in real time if um smoke or flames are detected. Um and then it kind of serves as a gate guard as well because we can see who's coming and going on the locations in the event that we don't have a lease operator present. But I would note that um as a standard practice, Poco employs twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week lease operators to be physically on our locations. This is a little bit of a plug. Um Poco has been hosting biannual wa- uh well control training for first responders since twenty twenty-two. And um we we retain wild well control as a company anyhow to handle potential um emergent events. Um and we've partnered with Adams County OEM as well as Hudson Fire and Protection District um to host these meetings to this point. And we hope to continue partnering with Adams County moving forward. The benefits of attending are numerous, but I'll highlight a few. It's valuable training that first responders might not otherwise receive specifically about well and gas from well control experts at Wild Well. Um it's exposure to oil and gas operations in a controlled environment and a safe place to ask any questions that you you have, you know, no s- no dumb questions in the room. And um it's also an opportunity for Poco to build rapport with first responders because we don't want the first time we meet you to be in an emergency. Um we do have our upcoming training scheduled already for April twenty-ninth and October twenty-eighth this year. And we would welcome and invite all of you to attend if you have time. Um that goes for staff as well. And um we're just trying to kind of grow this program a little bit. Uh we put it on anyway, so we'd love to fill the room. So spread the word. Okay, here's the haul route map that I made reference to. So the two pads are a mile apart. However, the haul routes were designed to optimize safety as well as reduce cumulative impacts. And you can clearly see um Connor in blue, Wakeman in orange. The only overlap is at Po Hotten and one hundred and twenty-eighth and it's just a cross. Um every other route until you get to um Hayes Mount north of one hundred and fifty-second or Tower Road south of one hundred and twentieth are independent haul routes for each pad. I'll I'll caveat this slide um right out of the gate by saying we don't know specifically the source of the water today as that would be something we would um we would uh contract much closer to operations. But what I what I will say is we typically contract through Freco or Tallgrass and that's done through independent um water brokers. So the the is more than likely one of these two, but I don't know the answer specifically for Connor or Wakeman today. Um and that water is pumped uh via uh temporarily flat lines to location and stored in MLVTs for use um during frac. And then just um for your for your reference, uh each, so each well in the Connor pad will be two miles. Each well will also get fifty-four frac stages in that. And to effectively complete those, it will take uh all sixteen wells, it would take two hundred and twelve million gallons of water and roughly two hundred and sixteen million pounds of sand to do that. Also would say kind of switching from the water used for operations to produced water here. Um Poco has been a participant in the CSU Produced Water Program since twenty twenty-three. That program was just ended um at the end of last year, but we offer data to CSU uh research students um to use in uh projects and looking at um how produced water can be more effectively managed moving forward. We continue to operate opportunity, e- evaluate opportunities for recycling produced water. However, the limited amount of produced water that Poco actually has. Um there's not, there's not really a viable option aside from disposal at this point. Um but we do continue looking at ways to do so. And then stormwater site plan. So Greg did a nice job talking about this, but I would add a few things. He did a great job calling out this unnamed ditch, which you can see flowing through the northeast corner here, uh slide with arrows. Um and then this site plan shows the diversion of of the water around our pad and reconnecting with that unnamed ditch in the event that there was ever water flowing there. Another thing I would add is this site is um built to act as a detention pond. It's uh designed to be bermed and it would handle a hundred-year flood events in the event that we needed to detain water there. So that's in addition to the the feedback that Greg offered in terms of um uh flow of water and where it would go off-site. Oh, I don't know how to back up using a mouse, but one more point. The the reason the pad itself is being used as a detention pond is we wanted to minimize surface impacts. The initial plan showed a separate detention. And so um you know, thoughtfully went through that process with our engineers and opted to create detention within the pond so that we could minimize that external impact. Getting close. The final final bit of information I want to share with you is on our facility design. And I am actually going to ask our uh VP of Operations to speak to this. He just does a better job on the the flow and the process. So I'll just ask Devin to join me to talk about that. And then we'll finish up on this one.
Good morning. I'm Devin Brown, VP of Operations for Poco. Megan gives me too much credit for explaining this better than she probably could, but uh we have here is our basic facility design. Um if you're traditional with the can uh familiar with traditional oil and gas setups. It would be one set of separation equipment and tanks for each well. What we've gone to is a bulk and test setup so that all of the wells go to a minimum set of equipment facilities. So the purpose of that facility is to separate the oil, water and gas into uh viable streams that we can get to pipelines back and sell from the pad itself. So what I'm showing here is one wellhead. This is just representing the process flow underground from one well, but uh in reality, it's going to be up to sixteen wells on this pad. What we'll do is the flow is coming out of the ground. How can has oil, water, gas combined? We need to separate that. We'll take one well per day, go into the high-pressure test separator. So that's how we're measuring the production from that well for that day. Everything else on the other wells on that pad are going into the high-pressure bulk. And so we're going from thousands of PSI pressure at the well down to less than a hundred PSI at this first stage of separation. Uh the red here indicates the gas flow, the black is the oil flow or green and then the wa- the blue is our water. So from the high-pressure systems, now that we've measured everything coming out of the wells, it goes down to a low-pressure bulk. Again, it's another stage of separation. Um at each stage of separation, we're collecting the gas that's coming off of the oil and putting that into an electric-driven VRU, which is a vapor recovery unit, which is the compression system to get that gas up into the gas cells line. Um the water is going to production tanks around the location. The wa- that water will be trucked off-site and go to commercial disposal. The oil continues into the next stage of separation, which is the search drum. That's about a two-hundred barrel horizontal uh drum. That's where we have to drop the pressure again to meet pipeline spec or our regres- our vapor pressure has to be less than twelve PSI. Any gas that comes off of the oil at this stage is also collected by a separate uh VRU that's been compressed and set up to the gas line, uh cells line for cells. The oil then goes from the search drum into the lact. So the lact is the custody tracks transfer pump. This is our midstream company pump. Um if the oil is off-spec for any reason or there's a temporary shutdown, we need to divert. We can divert into oil tanks, but there's a minimal number of tanks. It's about less than eight hundred barrels of actual workable capacity on location. Um if we need to circ- circulate that oil back through, we can go back through a heater-treater loop. Uh that just heats the oil up and separates out anything that shouldn't be there, uh any solid sediment, any water. And then it gets back into the search drum, it meets spec and it goes down to the cells line again. That's it in a nutshell. Thanks.
That was a lot. It's a lot to digest. If you have questions on that, we can certainly talk through it um after the presentation. Um I'll just finish up here with a a summary. Um want to point out uh as you know already, that the Connor Oil and Gas Location is protective of public health, safety, welfare, the environment and wildlife resources. Um the application is uh supported by Adams County staff recommendation. Um and Connor includes best management practices that avoid, to avoid, minimize and mitigate temporary impacts to surrounding environment. And um we respectfully request approval of the Connor OGF from the board. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Megan. So at this time, we're going to have questions from the board for the applicant. Uh we'll take a quick break and then we'll come back for public comment. So is there questions from the board for the applicant?
Yes, Chair.
Commissioner Pinter.
Uh, thank you so much for that presentation. Um you guys have really gone into a lot of detail. I have um some particular questions on your presentation. They are mirrors to what I, questions I asked of staff. You talked about the runoff protections on the pad site. You had a great diagram. I know you're having trouble with the mouse. Um but you talked about the pad site itself being the detention pond. Um but you talked about a hundred-year flood event. Unfortunately, with the storm cycles that we are experiencing in Colorado these days. Um I don't know that a hundred-year flood event is sufficient for what we might expect to experience in a two or three or five-year time period. So can you um speak to that and was hundred-year the only uh yardstick you used?
Was it the only, sorry?
Uh yardstick or?
Oh, the only yardstick, sorry. Um just want to make sure I heard. Uh in the in the plan that was submitted to the county, the hundred-year flood was the only um yardstick, I'll use your term. In designing the berms and the detention for this for this facility. Wish I had further information on that. That's what was designed. It's what we went um through that iterative process with your staff on. And it's ultimately what we decided to present as um the solution for this this site.
Okay, um that feels insufficient to me, so I'll be taking that into consideration. Um and yeah, that's my only question.
Thank you.
Okay, other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Chance later to ask questions on the record. We'll hear from the public. Um very interested to hear what they have to say. I know we've got a couple of folks who've been very patiently waiting for several hours, interested to hear what they have to say. And that will also inform some additional questions I might have for applicant and or staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it. Um with no further questions from the board at this time, we're going to take about a five-minute recess. Um the board's been, we came from directly from another meeting before we started the nine-thirty meeting. Um so we're going to reconvene at about eleven fifty-five. And then we'll finish and we'll start with public comment at that time. Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene the land use hearing. If I can state the case number. So we're on the Connor pad at one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue. And we're in the process to hear public comment. So Erica, do you have anyone signed up for public comment for this case?
We do have. Three people signed up to speak.
Okay.
The first person is Levi Madera.
Good morning. Thank you so much for waiting for this land use case today. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Leovie Madera. I live on one three two nine five Gun Club Road. And we've been living there a while, so I have a lot of concern and comments. First, I just want to start off by letting you know that it's really hard as a resident to know like when these meetings are occurring. Cause we get the initial letter that somebody's applying for a permit and then after that it kind of dwindles. Like it's really hard to navigate either if it's on the website or, or whatever the case. And second, when these facilities are in production, it's, we've never been notified. Like how do you submit a noise complaint alight? Any concern of that nature has been communicated by Adams County. And then I just want to point out that what's on paper and what was presented by Mr. Heen is what we live as a resident is different, different. And I'd like to start off by kind of explaining where we, we are, where we sit. Because I feel it's important for you to know the cumulative effect that we're experiencing. So we have Piccadilly Harvest Road, one hundred twentieth, one hundred fifty-second. Within that square, there's been so many sites that have been approved. The latest is between Gun Club and Piccadilly on one hundred and twenty-eighth. And that's Alma, Sevilla's Alma pad. And let me just tell you that. I had to submit a complaint on the road because it's dirt road. So during the winter, it's like slip and slide. So they had to install the asphalt. So I would ask the road people to reconsider twenty twenty-five rates. If you're going to use Gun Club, we're going to need to fix that because right now the Alma pad people put this big metal tube. That runs across Gun Club. They made a big bomb. There's a bunch of ridges just from like one machine that's been used with the big wheels. Like our suspension on our cars are taking a toll. And then our water wells have never been tested, even though if you look at a map, all the sites that have been around our area. Which is a concern for us. And I'd just like to start off by, there's so many carcinogenic chemicals, emitting chemicals that go up in the air. I know that they said they're not going to use twenty-three of them, but how about all the other ones that are being used that we don't know of? Either because of trade secrets or whatever. And whatever's going to the ground is going to come, it's not going to stay in a solid place. It's going to move around and it's going to reach our water wells. So we have that concern. We have kids. I have two sons. We've lived in this area. They've only been living in, in that house that we've lived in. And as you know, kids absorb more of what's out there. And over time, we know this, it's science. Cancer isn't going to come up from one day to the next. It's a prolonged period of time.
So you're at time. If you could please wrap up your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have that health carcinogenic effect. Our road, United Powers is going to be building a substation again. So. Why can't they use Harvest Road if it has two entrances and exits and Gun Club only has one entrance and exit? And yeah, I just would ask that if they do use Gun Club, then we're going to have to fix that road before they even start.
Thank you, Ms. Madera. Appreciate you appearing today.
They say that there's no.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Your time. We wanted three minutes for public comment. Thank you. Erica D. Crowder. Good morning. If you can please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Dwayne Crowder. I live at one three four five five Gun Club Road.
Go ahead.
Well, first I'd like to thank, I think this is Gregory Dean. I talked to this gentleman on the phone for about forty minutes one day who's very, very informative, very helpful and give me a lot of information. To go on here. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Paco Oil has also provided a lot of information for us that, you know, we can look at this and figure out what we like and don't like. And, and they've been real informative, real helpful. What I talked to there has been, you know, very helpful. So, you know, thank you to those people as well. However, my neighbors and all I hear kind of have a problem with this pad that's proposed. I wouldn't quite say that the location is, is bad. I do agree with the, the flood plain. You know, they haven't prepared for that, I think, quite as well as they should. And you're right, our weather is crazy anymore. So that's, that's one concern. I'm glad you brought that up. Second concern is traffic. Ten years ago, I come out here, I bought this place. I bought it specifically for a few reasons. One, it was supplied by natural gas and not propane. Two, it was on a dead end street. Three, the dead end street was only a mile long and there's only eight neighbors, including myself. That's not counting the guy across the street that's boarded up that, we just don't know where he is. I like this property where we're at because it's private, it's secluded, it's quiet. It is what a neighborhood in a rural area should be. Very quiet, very serene, very peaceful and very safe. For Paco to come in now and want to put anywhere from forty to eighty thousand vehicles a year up and down our dirt road. Is, I, I don't understand it. The safety, the dust, the pollution, the carbon output, the noise. I mean, you could go on and on. I think Sylvie did a good job about all the detrimental effects of it, you know, as far as cancers and this. I don't understand that. I don't know it, so I can't address that. But just the obvious is going to be. So intense that it's going to take our peaceful, quiet little neighborhood and turn it into something where really nobody wants to live. And I would assume nobody in this chamber would want to trade places with us to live on a street that now. Goes from about thirty cars a day or about nine thousand cars a year to forty to eighty thousand vehicles a day. Twenty-five percent of those being heavy equipment. Noise, pollution, again, dust. And the road deteriorates so bad, so quickly that now we're on a six week rotation to get a five pass grading done. To make sure our road doesn't have washboards, dips, drainage problems, anything like that. The six week.
Mister Crowder here at times. If you can please wrap up your comments.
Right, right there. Our six week rotation now, I predict will come to where it needs that grading every week minimum. So that's how bad it, our roads deteriorated. That's how much traffic they plan to put across the road. For their production.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Erica?
Melanie and Mike Morgan.
Good mornings. State your name and address for the record, then you may begin your comments.
Okay, it's Melanie Morgan. I live at one three, one three five Gun Club Road. I do want to address that the maps don't show that Gun Club Road is a dead end road. There's one way in and there's one way out. It's a road that I use with my children to ride our bikes, go for walks, walk the dog, pick up rocks. And that's not going to be possible for the next ten to twelve years with those trucks coming in. We don't have semis coming down our road. A semi is going to be incredibly disruptive. We already live within a one mile of a oil and gas pad, which is on one hundred and twenty-eight. So this will be the second one within one mile of all of our homes. We have seven homes on our street. One of the criteria that Greg mentioned was it was harmonious with the character of the neighborhood. There is a neighborhood there. And this is going to completely disrupt our neighborhood. I, I wanted to address too, because it is a one-way road in and out. How are we going to prevent trucks from backing up? The road being blocked. They've put in that culvert that our neighbor mentioned. They completely dug up the road and it was impassable for hours. What if emergency personnel needed to get in and out? How, like, is there a plan for that? I would strongly consider an alternate route. There is a grooved dirt road from one hundred and thirty-six to Harvest that could be redone. And then you don't go by seven homes of people trying to live peacefully with their animals and livestock and families trying to be outdoors and doing things. So we already have noise from one site. Now we're going to have noise and light disturbances from two sites. It's disruptive. It's not, we worry about our property value. We worry about everything. The peace is going to be gone. And I do, I, you know, I do have a question too about the testing for the water wells. If that could be done, I know it's offered. And what's done, what has been done in the past for homes that have had water well testing and there were issues? What did the, what did the company do for those homes? Poco, what did they do for those homes? These, this is the water we drink. This is the water we feed to our livestock. I mean, those are some of my top concerns. And then that, so Gun Club Road coming out to one hundred and twenty is a blind turn either direction. Traffic coming from the west or to the west from the east does not see that intersection. So you're having slow moving semis coming in and out. There will be accidents. Lots of them. So I think there needs to be a plan in place too, if you're going to use Gun Club to mitigate that problem.
Okay.
I mean, we just want to all be healthy and happy and.
Great. Thank you so much for appearing today. Erica, did you have anyone else signed up for public comment?
That was everyone signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this case? Not seeing anybody. Comes back to the board, an applicant response if it's requested. So any comments from the board or the applicant is present would like to respond?
I, I have a few questions. I'm trying to use the.
Commissioner, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Pinter, Odoricio and then Malika.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm just kind of curious. I appreciate our three speakers. Sylvie Dean and then Melanie, thank you so much. I apologize. I scribbled too fast to read your last names. I apologize. Can we, I'm just trying to, like with the clerk's address provided, or maybe Greg, you know, these are people who are clearly close to the site. Are they, are one of these individuals, one of the residents within the two thousand square, two thousand feet?
That's correct. One of the three is within two thousand.
Oh, three, all three of them are within?
No, only one of the three public commentators were, are within two thousand feet.
Okay.
The other two were noticed because they're within one mile, but they're not within two thousand feet.
Got it. Thank you so much. Thanks for that clarification. For me, the point of the two thousand foot setback is because it's the, what we discussed and debated frankly on this body for years. Is the minimum safe distance. And then to go closer than that, they needed neighbor consent. And in this instance, for me, that's a simple question. They don't have neighbor consent within the two thousand feet. And so I'm a no. And I, we could debate all the other stuff extensively, but we, this board debated for years and settled out a two thousand foot setback. And there was an opportunity to go closer with the close in neighbor consent and they don't have it in this case. And so I'm a no. And that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I have Commissioner Odoricio next, Malika, then Henson.
If you could pull up that setback map. With the numbers, I think that's it. So. I, tell me about the abandoned home. They, you said that they, 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 like, is it truly abandoned or just nobody could get a hold of somebody? And there's a difference between being a resident who's not there versus like the place falling apart and clearly nobody's like living in a habitable.
Sure, I can speak to that a little bit. That entire subdivision you see directly to the south of that pad was actually purchased by Denver International Airport back in twenty thirteen. All of the homes were demolished around that time as well, except for that home that's labeled as number two. I, I haven't been able to figure out exactly what happened there, but I think the intent was for the airport to purchase all the homes in that neighborhood. I, I do believe that that home is actually abandoned.
Got it. Is it? The rest is actually owned by DIA then, huh?
That's correct.
Okay. Because what I don't see there is that actually being within the two thousand feet. That's what I'm looking at.
The property line is within two thousand. It's the corner. I didn't want to cover the home, but it's that little. I don't know if you can see my cursor.
No, you're doing great.
That piece is the two thousand.
And, and, and let's, let's clarify the distance of the two thousand feet that we have versus the two thousand feet that the state uses? Can you explain the differences?
Yeah, so we use a two thousand foot to a parcel line that contains a house. The state uses a two thousand foot to the physical home. So by the state standard, you can see at the second, the third column on this table is the actual distance to the closest house. The closest house is two thousand feet away. One of the public commentators spoke, their, their physical home is twenty-four hundred feet away from the house. So at the state level, they meet the state setback of two thousand feet because they measure to a house. We implemented the parcel line designation as an added review. We implemented the parcel line designation as an added review by staff and the board to give the board a little more. Give the board an opportunity to review impacts from residents whose property might be within two thousand feet if their physical home was not. And that's where this um, the difference is. So. You can see like number four, for example, the house, the property line for number four is eighteen hundred and twenty feet. So within the two thousand foot setback, but their physical home is two thousand nine hundred and forty feet away. So. The state uses the third column, we use the second column. And that was um, intended to give staff and the board additional review opportunities. Um, to add additional BPs because there are certain standards in our regulations that we can apply if there's a property within two thousand feet. Whereas there are certain requirements that we can't if it's greater than two thousand feet. So that gave us a little bit extra. Room to add additional best management practices.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I do think that that's important to note. Also know that we we chose that specifically also because we don't want. People to feel like it's just about a building because people are still going to be using their property out and about and if there's issues with um. With emissions and and such. Can, how do we, how do we address the issues from some of the neighbors regarding the uh, the condition of the road? And the uh, issues dealing with uh, traffic and dust?
Yeah, I'll defer to Lori Clark, our development engineer, who reviewed this case.
Thank you. Um, so the applicant submitted a uh, traffic impact study. Was um, hundred and ten pages long and they did a thorough analysis of the haul routes. And um. It was um. The analysis was used to determine which haul routes were most appropriate. And road condition um, currently um, was part of that. And then um, anticipated future traffic um, was also part of that. And um, the traffic impact fee that they pay is specifically for the purpose of repairing any damage.
Can you, can you go to the haul route map? Please? So if you could um. Help me under, so I see where the pad is. It goes out on the pink dotted line, down to the green dotted line, to blue, and then the purple. Uh, which of those roads are city and which ones are county?
I believe those are all county roads.
Well, Tower Road I know is not entirely county, right, or?
Yeah, that's, that's, everything except that small portion that's highlighted in orange is.
Okay, that's what I, that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, I see that. And are we given any of the impact fee to Commerce City for that piece of Tower Road to use?
No, I I can defer to Jen if she wants to clarify any further.
No, we don't have the agreements with Commerce City to share the the traffic impact uh, and maintenance fees that we collect.
And then just for the sake of of clarity, uh, they were mentioning some of the, which ones, this, how much of it is dirt and how much of it is? Paved again? On this route?
I do not have specific numbers on that.
No, I meant like. On the map, we just know how much is, uh, where does the paving begin and end? Because one of the folks mentioned there was a. Dead end at Gun Club that, I'm just trying to understand the difference.
So Gun Club is certainly dirt.
Yes.
I can't speak to where along hundred twenty eighth may turn paved or hazemont. I can, the applicant may have more specifics on.
Sure.
Um, which portions of which roads. I know part of Tower Road is paved, obviously.
Got it.
Hundred twenty eighth is paved.
That's what I was looking at. Okay. Those are the only questions I have at this moment. I may have more after listening to some of the others.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Malika.
Yeah, I guess I just, I'm clarifying again. So our. We have a two thousand foot setback. And we're measuring that from the edge of the OGF to the property line. And in the table you you presented, we see that property number one does not meet that two thousand foot setback. Is that correct? But the residence is two thousand feet away.
That's correct, yeah.
I mean, you know, these standards were put in before me, so Emma and team, you guys are under. You're more aware of the conversations that took place with why you guys set it at the property line versus the actual property. But I guess my question then is, is how is it that this project then meets? The standards and regulations we have if that two thousand foot setback isn't. Meant. How do we, how do we meet number one if we do have a property within the two thousand foot setback?
That's where the uh, waiver comes in. Administrative if they have consent or the board grants the waiver instead. The measurement to the property line was added as like an extra.
Yeah.
Review so that if there was a house outside of two thousand feet, but the property is closer than two thousand feet, that would give staff in the board. Added opportunity to add additional best management practices in place. If the house is greater than two thousand feet, but the property wasn't.
I see. Thank you. That that helps me. Okay.
More of a procedural trigger.
A trigger.
Yeah, it's a procedural trigger.
Thank you. Okay. Um, and then also I. I also feel for this Gun Club Road situation, um, a dirt road and. I'll, I'll be honest, you know, that's a lot of trucks, big trucks headed down your way. Um. And so that I could see how this like a real impact um, to this community um, along that road. So. If, if there are alternatives to transport routes, I don't, I'd be interested in what that looks like. Obviously, the condition of these roads is probably all the same, I'm assuming. They're all dirt roads in this area. Yeah, so. Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, that's just uh, another concerning piece for me is, is the roads, the routes. And what that, what that impact is. That's it, that's it for now.
Sorry, was that a, was there a question or did you?
No, it's just more of a comment of roads and.
Alternatives that were evaluated and and.
Yeah, are there alternatives?
So um. Based on public comment we received, the biggest question we received was why not use Harvest and a hundred and thirty eighth Avenue? Um, and so the reason why that was not chosen is because that would direct traffic. And I'll let Lori speak to it in detail, but my understanding is that it let trap, it deflected traffic north and south along Harvest. So there are um, around seven homes along Gun Club and there are six homes along Harvest and then. It also would require the building out of a hundred and thirty eighth Avenue, which is not weight rated. And it also adds additional turns on, off of Harvest onto a hundred and thirty eighth and then off of a hundred and thirty eighth onto an access road. It also increases surface disturbance for an access road, whereas the access point is now in county right of way and a portion that would eventually be a road. Anyway, so they're building the road out essentially for the county. Um, that portion of a hundred and thirty sixth Avenue. And I'll let Lori go into more detail about how the um, route is determined.
Thank you. Um, so the items that were used in analysis um. For the route selection, um, so they um, they immediately. Um, did not use any um, roads that were marked new trucks or um. You know, weight restricted roads. Um, and then safety was um, prioritized. They um, they analyzed um. Crash data and um, road conditions. Um, and um. They also took into account um, in the truck routes, um. Things like left hand turning movements and things like that that could cause, cause um, you know, safety concerns. Um, so it was a very comprehensive um, analysis. And um, the routes that were chosen were chosen for. For safety. For all involved.
Things like it, Commissioner Malika?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. So on these dirt roads. Was there any discussion or is there any benefit to adding uh, gravel or additional road base? Prior to the beginning of this high number of trips? Was that, was that discussed?
Yes, the traffic impact study um, in the uh, mitigation section on page five. Talks about for gravel roads, dust control and other permit conditions of approval um, will be used. There'll be a traffic control plan with signage. Um, and um. So, yeah, so mitig- mitigation um, on the gravel roads um, was addressed.
Okay, so that's something that would happen, could happen during this, but like when we're, if, if they're experiencing this high number of. Trips of large trucks deteriorating the road conditions. During that process, I mean, is that, that will be dealt with along the way as, that would be as it's happening?
Yes, ma'am. That that'll be happening. Um, and it should also be noted that um. The bulk of the truck traffic, um, the two hundred and thirty-two um. Vehicles per day, um, that's about a three to five week period of time. And so that's a very, very limited amount of time. It's not going to be two hundred and thirty-two vehicles per day. For the next ten, fifteen years. It's a very short period of time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, could somebody please talk about light disturbance, which was a concern brought up by some of the residents? What is the, what is the impact of that on the residents in the area?
Um, I can speak to what we required and then if the applicant has um, wanted to respond to any specifics. They were required to submit a um, lighting mitigation and assessment plan, which included a background. Uh, assessment of light and then a modeled noise level to, or sorry, light level that uh. Qualified with state and county regulations on lumens per foot. So during completion or during, when the sound walls are up, all the lights will be below the sound walls except for the drilling rig. So there should be no light. Other than like ambient light coming off the top of the sound walls during, so there won't be spot floodlights or anything pointed towards residences.
Okay.
Additionally, any lights that are up will be pointed inward and downward. They're required to have light shields around all the lights, except for the drilling rig, which has lights on the top. For uh, FAA requirements. Um, and then once the sound walls go down, there won't be a lot of permanent lighting. There'll also be an eight foot privacy fence for any lights that are permanent on location. Um, and I refer to applicants, they have any more um, specifics on their lighting. Plan, but that's what the county requires. It has to be pointed downward and inward, has to be shielded. Um, they can't have any permanent lights on the outside of the sound walls during drilling and completions, except for the drilling rig because of FAA requirements. And then during production, when the sound walls go down and the eight foot cedar privacy fence goes up. The lighting is very minimal once the wells go into production.
Okay, thank you. Can we also revisit this drainage concern? Because I think you said that there's a potential that it, there, some runoff could go into a ditch that would go into Bar Lake?
I'll um, refer most of this to Lori, who reviewed the drainage plan as part of the engineering assessment. Uh, I may have misspoke when I said that.
Okay.
The drainage to prevent that from happening. Um, the drain, the added drainage. It's meant to prevent that from happening. So it's not a. Human made ditch. It's a natural occurring drainage. And so. The question was raised during a extensive high flood event, what would happen? And that drainage is put in place on the edge of the facility to prevent that from happening in, in the event of a massive flood and I'll let Lori speak more. Specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so for the drainage, um, the onsite drainage um, is. Controlled by our, our drainage criteria. Um, it's intended for the hundred year uh, storm event. And then beyond the hundred year storm event, um, we uh, require an extra foot. Of um, runoff storage. And so that, that's just for um, storm events that exceed the hundred year event. And um, so the onsite drainage is actually separate from. The natural drainage channel that runs around the site. And so the applicant is proposing to divert that around the site. And so that's actually separate from the onsite drainage. So there's actually two systems, one for onsite and one for um, the natural channel offsite. And I should also note that the um, the drainage plan that the applicant showed was a previous. Um, supplemental and has been amended since then. We have not allowed for the detention pond onsite to be located on top of the actual. Drill site. So the um, the drainage is then separated from the, the active uh, drill pad.
Okay. Thank you. And I believe there was also a question about. Uh, water, and I, and I know this was covered in the presentation, but I just want to, I'm speaking specifically to notes I took during the residence. During the public comment about water wells and this might be for the applicant, what they do if, I mean. If maybe we can revisit the water testing, well testing and. What happens, there's a concern by residents, what happens if their well is contaminated, I think is what they were asking.
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to the applicant to uh, talk about follow up. I will note that we've had a water wells testing program in place around oil and gas wells for some time in Adams County and. Residents are, are welcome to take advantage of it. It was a free program over by the county. Now we require operators to pay for it. They're required to, since they're private water well testing, unless the resident wishes to share that data with us, we don't, it's private data. It's from a private well, so there are. Disclosure issues with that. Um, I will note that I have not been made aware of any, as a result of water well testing, any adverse results. So the, what happens if the water well? We haven't had that happen.
Okay.
Um, and all the water wells have been tested so far from oil and gas and that I'm aware of. Um, but I'll let the applicant speak directly on how they would respond in a, a situation where maybe a water well test found something abnormal or, or some sort of impact.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is, my name is Andrea Gross. I'm a regulatory consultant, helping Poco with all local, state and federal permitting. If it's required. Um, I'd like to state that uh, beyond the county's requirement for water well samplings. Per the state requirements, all operators have to offer to sample water um, within. I believe it's a quarter mile, but because of Adams County, that radius is extended. They have to do that, offer to do that prior to any oil and gas operations. So it's, it's obtaining a baseline quality of that water. Um, I will say for state requirements, that testing um, results is public. So for some, some people do not want their water well tested and we have to, we have to respect that as operators, but. There is that baseline water sampling, whatever the quality of that water is pri- um, at that testing. Is prior to any oil and gas from the applicant. As operators, they can't do anything to improve the quality of that water at that time, but it does prove. The qual, the baseline sample of that. There is also um, subsequent monitoring after operations. To determine and make sure that that water was not um, affected at any point in time because of the operations. So you have prior to operations, the water sampled. And then after operations, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's between a year and three years. After the operations have ended for drilling and completing those wells. And then you have to go back again at five years to sample the water. So again, we have that baseline, which is really important to determine what it was prior to oil and gas. And then we have continuous subsequent um, sampling if they allow the operator to continue to do that sampling. And it is public through ECMC. Um, obviously, we've been told it isn't through the county, but it is through the state.
Thank you. And then I have one more question about uh, other, other pad sites that are uh. Not, not, not a far distance from some of the residents who spoke here today. And I, I believe again, it was probably covered in the, the presentation, the cumulative, is there a cumulative air impact study? Air quality, you know, cumulative impact, air quality study?
I, I don't know at the county level. I know that when operators are going to ECMC to obtain new permits, which Poco is. And it is being heard. Um, cumulative impacts is analyzed. cumulative impacts is analyzed and included in a cumulative impacts plan. We discuss that with staff, and then the commissioners are always very interested and concerned, and we always get a lot of questions regarding. What they have identified now is past, present, and future developments or industrial uses within a mile. So that is analyzed at the state level. The, the air quality, air quality monitoring also kind of sets a baseline prior to the operations. And then it is also sampled for after the operations and how that pad has cumulatively, cumulatively affected the surrounding area. So I, I do know that there are other locations. One of the residents discussed the Alma pad, which is an extraction pad, which is about, I think, a little over a mile from this proposed pad.
So my question, so I'm sorry, you have to break this down for me. So, so the impact, so what's happening at the Alma pad, I mean, that's not that far away. So the air quality, I know you're, you're talking about setting a baseline, but.
I will say, I, I believe that the Alma pad, and I, I'm not a representative for that company, so I can't talk. I believe that pad is built out. So the drilling is already done, which the, the incremental air quality is impacted normally from traffic to and from the location during like construction, drilling, and completions. Not to say that there is not additional impacts from the equipment, but that pad, I believe, is already drilled out. So the Poco pad would, would not incrementally affect or increase based on the Alma activities.
Okay, thank you.
If I may clarify, the Alma is finishing up drilling now. They have a, they have an electric rig on that one as well. They, it's operated by Seavitas or, or Extraction, it's a subsidiary of Seavitas. I believe they are finishing drilling the Alma pad currently. So any, again, any truck traffic would be temporary from the Alma, which is almost done. And then, once that goes into production, it'd be a same traffic portfolio. And that pad was also approved by Adams County through the old regulations, the Alma.
Okay, thank you. I do have, I'm sorry, I have one more question, which is for staff, is, are we doing staff questions right? So you know, we heard Commissioner Parenter's comment about we have a two thousand-foot setback. And can staff just clarify you, that you're recommending approval of this waiver based on? But I mean, so that, you know, we're altering our own, you know, what you're asking, or you're, you're, you know, suggesting approval of an alteration to our own existing regulations?
So that's correct. So the, the two thousand foot to the property line is a procedural trigger that would take the decision out of staff's hands largely without consent and give it to the board instead. So the old regulations, almost everything was administrative, even if it was closer than a distance. And so during the rulemaking at the state or at the county level, the decision was made to have this procedural trigger and essentially take the decision from staff and give it to the board to make. And so, but we built the waiver process specifically, there are specific sections in our code that we adopted specific criteria of approval for waiver that they have to meet, which are the added BMPs, Control Design Standards, things like that, in the event that that procedural trigger was met. So to answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So the waiver is what's, the waiver is from the residential setback because that procedural trigger was met.
You're welcome. I'm going to jump in here. Oh, see the applicant come down to respond?
I just, I wanted to give a little more to Commissioner Henderson's question on air cumulative impacts of air quality. And there's a separate permitting process through CDPE under Right Seven that requires us to do background air modeling. And so that permit doesn't happen until closer to the time of construction of the pad, because it's only good for six months from the time of approval. But we go through an extensive process with CDPE air quality division on the modeling of what our facility and equipment and emissions will do to the surrounding air quality. And that takes into consideration national ambient air quality standards. It also takes into consideration the current ambient or background condition of the air. So that's just a separate process, and I wanted to clarify that that's happening also.
Thank you.
Yep. And there's a condition precedent that the air quality plan, in addition to the state approval, goes through county approval. And that would be reviewed by our air quality program specialist within environmental programs. And that's a condition precedent, so that's before they can start construction. That background modeling not only has to meet state standards, it has to meet whatever standard the county sets in addition to state standard.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to hop in here, and then I have Commissioner Odoricio and Pinter for second comment. So help me out, Greg. A lot's been shared, a lot of information. To go back to the neighbors concerned, it does, very familiar with this area. I grew up just west of here on one hundred and fifty-second, west of I-76. While it does appear as a rural area, what did the traffic impacts, do we have the, the daily traffic totals? Because what ends up happening, and we see this everywhere in transportation, is as there are accidents or congestion, alternative routes are, drivers look for alternative routes, and alternative routes in this case would be one hundred and twenty-eighth Avenue, especially for traffic traveling north on Tower Road would go down one hundred, one hundred and twentieth. So it was stated by one of the residents that the number of vehicles anticipated was forty to eighty thousand vehicle trips. Do we have any estimated number of trips from the traffic impact study?
Yes, and the chart that you see here, so in the site construction phase, vehicles per day is forty-four, and that's for forty-eight weeks. The drilling phase is one hundred vehicles per day, and that's for eighteen to twenty weeks. And then completion is one hundred and forty vehicles per day for another eighteen to twenty weeks. Flowback is two hundred and thirty-two vehicles per day for three to five weeks. And then after flowback, traffic will reduce to between three and six vehicles per day for the life of the site.
Rough numbers, what is, what is that total net number of trips?
Yes, so the traffic impact study did analyze the, the current traffic and then the future traffic, and then they added in the expected traffic and took all that into consideration.
So I just want to recognize the neighborhood also grew up in rural, unincorporated Adams County, which is now an island completely surrounded by the city of Brighton. My parents still live there. I know, I don't live there, but I understand. I, I do want to set expectations, and this is not revealing my vote one way or the other, is that, you know, the basis here is that property owners do have rights. And then the board, it comes to us for regulations, and I understand that today's a waiver. So regarding the vehicle traffic, can you articulate, is there any either water pipeline or oil pipeline that can be used to lessen the traffic impact to the neighborhood?
So the applicant is required to use an oil pipeline and a natural gas pipeline. So that's built into condition of approval number, condition of approval number seven. They're required to use both of those as a condition of approval, and if the pipeline goes down, they have to shut the wells in until the pipeline can come back online. That's for traffic related, for impacts of traffic. That's how the fee was assessed as well. So they presented to us that they're going to use natural gas and crude oil pipeline and lay flat pipeline for bringing fresh water onto location as opposed to trucks. So that is a requirement. That's what's built, that's how they get the discount for the fee, for the traffic impact fees, because they'll use lay flat lines to bring water instead of trucks. They'll use pipeline to take oil off location instead of trucks. And then natural gas pipeline, obviously can't truck gas, but instead of venting, I mean, it's not allowed to vent, so that wouldn't be an option either way. But and gas pipeline to take product away. The only potential thing they could add would be produce water pipeline, which they're not, they're recommending to truck produce water. And I'll let the applicant speak specifically as to why that isn't an option. It's not a requirement in Adams County's regulations that they use produce water pipeline. It's a requirement to use oil pipeline and natural gas pipeline. Typically, when they're closer than two thousand feet to homes, but produce water pipeline is not a requirement.
So the numbers that are reflected here does realize the pipeline and the reduction of traffic using those pipelines?
Yeah, so the three to six trucks per day, that would be total. Once the wells, once they're done drilling, fracking the wells, the trucks drop to three to six per day, and that's to haul the water. And then all the oil and natural gas gets piped off location. And so that's where that traffic count comes into effect. So it drops from, so it'll be three to six of their trucks per day in addition to any residential traffic on the, once the wells go into production. And that's where the fee came from as well.
I really.
And that's a requirement.
Great, thank you. I really appreciate that. As far as the air quality, can you talk about when is the county onsite? What are the monitors in place? And then what is the ongoing programming that Adams County has implemented to track these monitors and make sure that it's not great? We've, we've gone through this. We are a large county, twelve hundred square miles. We go all the way from rural to one of the top ten polluted zip codes in Adams County. So rural air all the way to those that live near the Suncor refinery. So if you can explain some of the programming that's in place when you would be onsite and what's, what does ongoing reporting look like?
I, I phoned a friend. We have Dr. Taya Stockman, who's on staff with Adams County. She can speak to all the air quality.
Hi, my name is Dr. Taya Stockman. I'm the air quality policy and program specialist here at Adams County. And a lot of the air quality monitoring plans we partook in the Regulation Seven rulemaking that happened last month to ensure pushing for the highest, most protective that we could at the state level. With that, the state has developed draft guidelines for all of the air quality monitoring plans in place. They specifically require, if, as Greg was stating, any, any place that has within four, within twen, two thousand feet of a home that we would require four air quality monitors. Adams County will require four air quality monitors independent of that, as well as speciated sampling that will, that can occur in different phases of the project. But also if any of those monitors trigger a threshold that alerts any of us that there's an issue. And that is an automatic trigger, so it's not like the next day it's sampled, it's sampled right away, which is super important, something that we made sure is in place. We're also, as Greg was stating, the predominant impacts for air quality impacts from the site is due to the drilling flowback stages of the process. We can require additional sampling there if we would like to. And we require those monitors to be in place. So if there's any sort of trigger of an event, we'll be notified right away. Those, any sort of air quality, anything air quality related, we get monthly reports from the state, and we review those reports to make sure that there's no issues. And the state also reviews those reports for both data quality, which the state is now requiring extra data quality measures in place that we will, we, we check every month. And then from just making sure that there are no exceedances that were not reported by the site as they should have been reported. And the state also reviews all of those as well.
And then to add on that, there is a provision that if the county requests air quality data, we can request the data of the operator at any time. Should we have a air quality complaint or something like that? Or if the state receives a complaint, we can request air quality data from the applicant at any time outside of that monthly period. I also note that provisions in our conditions of approval, the electric drilling rigs reduce emissions significantly. And then during fracking, they're required to use a tier four or better engine, which is a, a low emitting engine or natural gas-powered engines as opposed to diesel. So that reduces noise and air quality impacts. And I can let Taya speak to the type four versus type three engines.
Yeah, so one of the state standards for all of these is that we're, we're requiring the most stringent engines to be used. And what's beneficial is like the engines that will be used most of the time, the, will be electric, which is a super, it's a very big air quality impact to have those diesel engines running all the time.
So it will be diesel or it will be electric? I'm sorry.
Electric for drilling, for sure. And then either electric or if they can't use electric engines for completions, it has to be a tier four or a natural gas-powered engine as opposed to a diesel.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. Just a question on the neighborhood and what is available to the public? So what was brought up was the process. So this initial process started in 2022. So from a procedural standpoint, what safeguards are in place? Do they contact the operator? This was the first time I've done municipal elected work now with the county level electorals. First time I've heard, and probably because it's a new regulation at the state, where they can do well testing if a resident, private resident was to request that, which I think is really valuable. How does the public access all of these? Where, does that information reside? How, and this might be a question also for the applicant, even though I'm looking at you, Greg. Thank you for facilitating all of that. How do they get in contact with the county and/or the operator for some of these regulations, testing that they may want to have?
Yeah, so they would reach out directly to the operator about testing their water well. Where the data is stored, I can let the applicant speak directly to that, where it's stored on the ECMC's website, since the county doesn't own that data. Did you have a question about how to, so to file like a complaint or something, they could either file it through us, depending on what it is. We can direct them to the state or we can follow up. We have our oil and gas inspectors, so they typically will respond to all complaints, noise, odor, dust, light, nuisance, traffic, and mud tracking. Those all are under our bailiwick. So we would send our two oil and gas inspectors out in response to that kind of complaint. If it's a water complaint, we can facilitate that conversation with either the ECMC or the Division of Water Resources and the operator. That, and then I can let the operators, or the applicant speak specifically on where water well data might be stored or how they would get access to that information.
So Poco and, and any operator operating in Adams County would be required to water well test for any water well that is owned by someone who wants it tested. We would notify the owners of those water wells directly. We'll send a letter asking them for permission to test their water well. And then, when they consent to having it tested, we send out specialists to, to take the sample and send it in for analysis. That data becomes public through the state. So the only reason somebody within a mile of our site wouldn't have their water tested in a private water well would be if they declined the opportunity to have it tested. And just for timeline's sake, that wouldn't happen until we were ready, getting close to ready to construct this pad. So no one would have been contacted yet. That would come closer to construction of the pad.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. Only have two more questions. Regarding Gun Club Road, so Gun Club dead ends, if my memory serves me, it dead ends, that other side was also fine at one hundred and twenty-eighth and Gun Club, so it doesn't travel further south? No. Okay, it does not travel further south. Okay, understood. But it does go through one hundred and fifty-second. That's not an approved route. Is that correct?
It also dead ends at one hundred and thirty-sixth, if I'm not mistaken. So it does not go all the way north either.
Okay, so it's Piccadilly that I'm thinking of that does connect all the way through.
And Piccadilly is not an authorized access point for either of these applications.
Okay, it doesn't help. Thank you for that information. I'm not so familiar with that entire area to know what other drill sites are in place. Is there any other traffic being diverted to these two particular, this case and then also the next case has identified roadways that they'll be traveled. Are there any other oil well sites in the area that we have a similar setup? That they'll also be traveling on one hundred and twenty-eighth? So what I'm looking for is like a cumulative, there's local traffic, then there's like, if, so I see you nodding. I don't know if my question was clear.
No, I understand. So obviously, nothing that uses Gun Club, because obviously that road dead ends at one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue. The only other existing multi-well pad is the Seavitas Alma pad, and I, I can't recall off the top of my head what the. Um, the only other existing multi-well pad is the Seavitas Alma pad, and I, I can't recall off the top of my head what their haul route is. I'll have to look that up in the case file. Um, but the Wakeman pad, the other proposed pad from the same applicant does not use the same roads as the Connor. So they're on all separate um haul routes to alleviate public impact and impact county infrastructure. I'd have to look up what the haul route is for the Seavitas pad. I will note that um, the Seavitas pad's almost done drilling as well. So once that well goes into production, their truck traffic, whatever the haul route is, drops to three to six around that. So it, it becomes like light duty trucks, something like that. So the Seavitas is almost done drilling, so any impacts that were on Seavitas, regardless of the haul route, and I can find that haul route information for the Alma pad, um would almost be done as well.
Okay, my final question is, um, on this particular location, you opened your statement with this, Greg, is were there other, any other sites on the property that was being considered for this oil pad site?
I'll let the applicant speak to the, the alternatives that they included on this one.
Okay, thank you.
They did do an alternative assessment for the, the Wakeman. Um, they can go over the.
Did they do one for Connor?
That's a, no. Did you want to talk about the?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, this location didn't trigger an alternative location analysis at Adams County or the state ECMC. And so no, no other locations were considered for this one in particular.
Okay, thank you. That answers all my questions. So I have Commissioner Odericio, then Pinter.
So I just, Greg, I'm gonna ask you kind of some summary questions and we might have to phone a friend here. Let's start with, uh, the term that we're using is waiver, which is a trigger based on the location of, the, the distance between um, the property uh of the drilling facility and the property of residents. That's been triggered. The waiver then not only triggers the notification and maybe even this hearing, taking it out of the hands of an administrative decision, but it also triggers additional what you're calling BMPs, best management practices. So where's this, can you go back to the summary of what the best management practices that you're adding to this that are normally not added? That's what I was looking for. Uh, if you could highlight the specific BMPs where you are going above and beyond what you would have normally done because of the trigger. So you've got your baseline, which is our normal minimum that you would approve in an administrative pr- process if somebody's property line was two thousand and one foot. Anything below that, you've added more. Can you talk about what you've done above and beyond that minimum baseline?
Yeah, so they're required because of the trigger to use electric drilling rigs. They were required to connect to pipelines, so it took the option of trucking oil off location off the table because it triggered this um secondary review. Um, it also required noise monitors to be placed along the perimeter of the facility near in nearest direction of nearest residents, which would not have been required otherwise. It required uh more robust air quality monitoring, so it gave the county the uh op- option to approve an air quality monitoring plant. Typically, those are state approvals only. Um, because it met this trigger, we get approval of it as well based on county's regulations. I think those are the um specific ones that are different because they triggered. And then it obviously took the decision away from staff and gave it to the board.
Yeah, I, I see that part. So um, the, the parts that are interesting to me is, is in analyzing each of these uh additional BMPs. We, we put this, how many of, let me start over, sorry. The air quality I see has included monitoring, not just modeling, and that's important. Explain the difference and why that's a, a significant improvement rather than uh the, the between modeling and monitoring.
Yeah, so modeling is a one-time, just modeling at the, they have to present the case to the division and the division has to look at it based on, you know, the, the ambient air quality monitoring standards, like the division said. Mo- monitoring requires not just, we will have, they will be required to have at least four air sensors collecting minutely data twenty-four seven as well as summa canister sampling. And what summa canister sampling is, is like, you know, talking about the spes- very specific pollutants of concern that could be um emitted from an oil and gas site. And if there's any issues at all with that, then we can come back to them and say, hey, there's an issue here. And the state will also say, hey, there's an issue here. So the monitoring is all through the, so they have to do ten days before the, any sort of breaking ground begins, and then all through construction, and then all through past their, at least the state requires six months of production, and we can easily require longer than that. Um, for instance, um Broomfield requires um one to three years depending on the site location. So that is a, that we can add additional um monitoring that will be extensive as well.
So let me, if I break it down by topic, method, frequency, scope and duration. Uh, I'm just picking this up as we go. Method, you got four canisters and it's model, monitoring, not modeling. So it's not just some dude sitting in with his spreadsheet in an office somewhere. This is actual real, real air, real time. And the two other me- the methods are the twenty-four seven and then the periodic canister.
Yes, and another thing that we can easily do is if there's any issues that we see from any oil and gas site across the county, the state now has what they call the zoo, which is these fancy air quality mobile labs that we can bring in and do monit- monitoring around the community, either stationary for an extended period of time of a few weeks or um finer resolution monit- monitoring to understand what's coming from specific sources.
So that's the mobile. I'm, I'm getting there, guys, sorry. And then this, the, I, because I believe also the scope of what you, you said is, is definitely expanded than the normal minimum. And then the duration, uh, you said is uh the state standard is six months. What are we requiring here for after the production phase?
So this is something that the board can decide and approve upon. In our pre, in our statement for the Regulation Seven rulemaking hearing that happened last month, we requested one year minimum of production moni- monitoring. This was not ultimately adopted by the state, but Adams County can easily implement one year required monitoring after the production phase starts. Or we can extend it further if you want it to be extended further, like Broomfield has up to two to three years.
So, and that, and that I appreciate that because what you've said in the statements that you've given us, there's a couple of statements where you said we can. I'm gonna ask, what's the difference between what we're proposing as it's written now versus what we can do? And so the two possible dials that we can move that you've mentioned have been the four canis- uh, four monitoring
Yes.
uh items versus, and, and so do you recommend going beyond four or what's the reasonable amount? And then the next question will be is, uh, what is it now on duration? And do you recommend we go to the one year? For asking the state to go to one year, I would not support anything below one year. If that's the standard, we're recommending elsewhere. So those are the two questions I have as far as variation of, of the recommendation.
I'll let Taya speak specifically. I'll just tell you that the condition of a, the condition precedent, it's condition precedent number three, so that's required prior to construction, just as the county gets to approve the plan. So we left it vague because we defer to Taya and her expertise in reviewing the air quality monitoring plan. We can certainly add more specificity to condition proceedant number three to those, those items that you mentioned, the duration. Um, we put that in the condition uh that says could require things like this, this and that, like the extended period, more monitors. We could have five, six monitors if we want. Um, we, we have some bullet points we could potentially add as conditions to that condition precedent. And I'll let Taya talk to which of those bullets, to add more specificity to the condition.
Um, so some specificity of the condition could include, I, I agree, um, having at least one year of production mo- monitoring is very valuable and which includes um, the triggering of these canisters, which would then speciate the date, which would then speciate if there is any threshold triggered to say, hey, there is an issue happening here, we need to see what's happening. Um, and then we can follow, you know, then staff could follow up and say, okay, we want the division to investigate this further. We, so how we have it laid out is um, the state does not specifically determine what needs to be sampled for, and we would recommend a, at a minimum, what's called BTEX compounds, benzene, toluene, ethylene oxide and xylene, which are known to be emitted from oil and gas sites. Those are like the big four, if you would say. Um, so any summa canister, we could say would have to have a minimum of BTEX uh compounds. I would suggest a minimum of four um airs, four airs uh sites for um the locations around the pad, which we will ensure makes sense from a standpoint of not only where the houses are, so where there's, you know, more houses, maybe to the south or um south uh west, that there's more um monitoring happening there compared to a different place lo- like in location of the pad. Which, and we would also make sure that that meets just overall standard of where the meteorology happens and that we're actually capturing plumes when they happen.
Please continue.
Um, so those are really like the, the main things that we would do above the state recommendations. Um, which includes, you know, we're looking at minutely data, um rather than the state previously had hourly data. This is the draft document, which is currently not, uh, like that the state has, that's not adopted yet. And I am planning on uh requiring everything that the draft document has and more stringent measures. So that's kind of my thought.
I'll wrap this up.
Okay.
So in summary, um, I would ask, uh, first of all, I want to thank you. And I also want to thank this board and the people before that have leaned in on this issue of environmental protection and trying to raise the bar um across the board, you know, whether it's our industrial or it's oil and gas or other uh areas of environmental protection, which you've done is established. Um, you helped us raise the bar and now you're setting the, the minimum for others and for this board. I, I'm reluctant to get too deep into the details, but it sounds like you're comfortable with having some ba- baseline minimums be more specified in the um conditions, uh specifically at least four sites for air monitoring, at least one year for duration. I'm gonna go down the topics. So the method is monitoring, not modeling. The frequency is twenty-four seven plus potential uh ad hoc canister and ad hoc mobile. The scope includes uh the geographic scope would be a minimum four, and you could add more. And then the um qualitative scope would be the compounds that you listed. And then the duration would be a minimum one year. If you feel that's a good baseline to set to raise the bar, then I would ask that we modify a condition accordingly to meet those minimum standards based on your recommendation. Because I don't want to go any more granular in micromanaging uh that particular level of technical detail than what we've just suggested there.
Yes.
I, as a matter of record, I would like to, wait, go ahead and finish it. Go ahead.
I just want to say, yes, I agree with the, the scope that you laid out.
Thank you.
And I, I did just speak to the applicant. They have agreed to those.
Okay, perfect. Um, I will also note for the record that I appreciate this team. When we, we deliberately and intentionally created a trigger where we would raise the bar even more. And this is an example. How many times, Greg, have we had this situation come up since we implement, since we passed these regs?
This is the first OGF, so this is the first one.
Right. And therefore, for me, I think it's, I'm going to support this because we intentionally created this framework. And I believe you guys are all working diligently and, and responsibly. And I know, based on the feedback, or at least the direction from this board, you would tell us to deny it if you didn't feel comfortable with what you're recommending. And so when you add those additional best management practices, electrification, pipeline, noise monitors, and the air quality, which we've discussed ad nauseam and def. I feel comfortable with where we're going if we can make that modification to the air. And, and that's where I'm leaning toward right now.
Thank you for that. And um, if I may address Commissioner Baca's question about the haul route for the Alma, I did have staff.
Yes, please.
Um, that um haul route is a Piccadilly. So it's not on the si- it's a completely separate route. So it takes a hundred and twenty-eighth Avenue, so the, the pad is right, follow my cursor on the screen there. The pad is located around right there. The current access is off the pad and up Piccadilly to a hundred and fifty-second. So it's a separate um haul route than those being proposed for Connor and Wakeman. And I will also note again that they're almost done drilling at Alma, so that traffic will drop off precipitously at the Alma site on Piccadilly once that site is done.
Great, thank you, Greg. And I have Commissioner Pinter.
Yeah, just a, a question. So if we go to the next slide, they had the feet from the structure and the feet from the property line. Oh, I thought they were closer than that. I think I'd have this PowerPoint measure memorized at this point. Um, so in looking at this, um, I haven't changed my perspective, but I do have a technical question on the measurements in the bottom left grid. Um, for example, uh, property number one, which is a no, it says that it is a two thousand at, literally at two thousand feet, and the state line for denial is if they can't have owner, like resident consent at, you know, under two thousand feet, then it would not meet the state guideline as well. Is that correct?
Um, partially. They have a similar trigger than what we do. Um, if it's less than two thousand feet, it's still approvable by the state, the ECMC, it just has um to go to the, it, it still has to go to a hearing in front of the ECMC. So if it, they, the ECMC has approved countless um facilities closer than two thousand feet. They just measure to the actual physical house. They just, same thing, they require additional best manager practices in those events that um they are closer than two thousand feet. They have an informed consent process at the state level as well, but it's not requi- similar to, it's not required in the county's regulation. The only thing it's required for is an administrative waiver from the setback. At the state, it's just as a demonstration that the surrounding landowners are not opposed.
Okay, so then unlike our neighbors where they measure from the structure as well in Arapahoe County, they have a three thousand foot measurement from the structure in Arapahoe County, but if they don't have consent inside the three thousand feet, it's my understanding that Arapahoe is a denial.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that.
So I'm just trying to understand the different jurisdictions and how they.
Ours just make, you make the deci- the board make the decision.
Okay, yeah. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Mulca.
All right, we're still going here. Um, sorry to bring this up again, but I want to just be really clear about what this project is doing to Gun Club Road. We have the impact fee. That impact fee goes directly to that segment of the road and maintenance of that road?
Public Works uh ultimately determine what roads need to be uh upgraded um and, and maintained. Um, they have a maintenance schedule and go out and evaluate on a regular basis and, and determine what that looks like. Um, I don't know. We do have the Public Works Director um here, if you would like to question him about this.
Sure, yeah. Well, really what my question is, is so what is that impact fee being used for? Specifically, is that going to this road and then um for maintenance? And then uh, you know, is there an opportunity to, you know, pave the road or provide any extra pedestrian, you know, walkways along Gun Club Road? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, how is this impact fee being used to mitigate the impact? And what does that look like? If anybody knows.
Maybe I can take it and then uh the, the Director of Public Works can, can step in as well. We are, I, I personally am currently working with uh people in Public Works to determine um which roads are eligible for the uh road maintenance fee that we collect for oil and gas facilities. I don't know if this road is specifically on that list. Um, so I don't know. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
So the, so, good morning, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Brian Staley with Public Works. Uh, the oil and gas impact fee uh was envisioned and implemented some five years ago or so. Um, and we've collected about six million dollars and, and really struggled with the language of the fee to figure out how to use it in the county. Um, it's pretty restrictive in that we have to work to identify where the oil and gas industry is impacting our roadways um to come up with uh surface change uh investment. Um, so it, it's not maintenance of roads, it is surface change um restrictions. So the legal team has helped us understand where and how we can use it. We use it on our paving program and that's how we're investing that $6 million that's sitting in the bank this year. And we'll continue to do so on roads that are impacted by oil and gas traffic. So it won't be used specifically on this roadway necessarily, but we'll continue to work with CED to revise the language of how this is used under the strictures of state law and how these fees can be implemented and expand that definition as we're able. But we are approaching it with the, the broadest possible interpretation and the best possible intent to make sure that we're using these dollars as they're intended and with the best possible investment for the residents of Adams County. But no, it's not for pedestrian use or for maintenance of the, of the roadways directly impacted by this particular well necessarily.
Okay. So we're going to get some money for this and then, but we can't use it to maintain the road. So what kind of impact will this be on the county then? That we have to maintain this road that's now heavily, significantly more used than it was prior to that? Brian, I don't know if you know this question, but maybe it goes somewhere else. But I'm worried about, you know, are we then now paying as a county and the residents of Adams County for this business to continue to move these big trucks around? I don't know. That makes me feel a little uneasy.
So Lori did a good job of explaining how the, if, if approved, you'll see an immediate impact of onboarding this well site. And then it's going to drop off into a maintenance operation. So there's going to be an impact on the county. But we understand that in Public Works, we're going to pay attention to this site as we do all oil and gas sites across the gravel road network. We understand those impacts and we're going to make sure that we're investing in the grading and dust mitigation along with our partners that are developing the site. We maintain close relationships with the developers to make sure that they understand their impacts. We understand how we can facilitate and work with the neighborhood. So it's not a, it's not a, oh, something's happening, we're surprised. We know what's happening on the roads. Our operations district managers are in close contact when things are happening on our roadways so that we can shift resources appropriately.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. So I have that answer your question. So what I'm hearing you say is the funding is collected, Adams County is always responsible for the maintenance of the roadways. So just because we're collecting this doesn't mean the money's not going in here. We always budget for the maintenance of the roadways across Adams County. So that's our baseline that we are responsible for maintenance of the gravel roads.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That helps me a lot. Thank you.
Commissioner Baca, I just spoke with the applicant. They have just agreed to pave Gun Club Road from 136 to 128, if that will help with reclaimed asphalt. That small section of 136 to help reduce dust or potential noise or road impacts.
Thank you for that, Greg. I'm going to look at the attorneys on process here. Thank you, Brian, for coming up. Thank you, Sally.
I think there are two, maybe an additional condition precedent. I think this paving needs to happen before the pad is constructed of Gun Club Road. Okay. So an additional condition precedent and then a, an amendment of proposed condition precedent number three. And I know that Taya is working on the language for amended condition precedent number three. And I can work on the language for the additional condition precedent. Maybe we need a five-minute break to, so you can at least know what you're potentially voting on as these proposed amendments go.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. So let's go ahead and take about a 10-minute break. So we'll reconvene at 1:30 PM. Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene, excuse me, the land use hearing. Do I need to state the case again? We're still on the same case. It is the Connor Pad at 136th Avenue. So any additional questions from the board? I saw an attorney. So any additional questions from the board? I saw an attorney. Okay, someone want him?
Jen Rutter is ready with the proposed amendment language. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I was not the author of these. I just wrote them. And I'm not sure that I can, I can read that. One more. I guess. That's just the one. Alright, so Taya helped to amend condition precedent number three. So now it reads, "The applicant shall submit an air quality monitoring plan for the site and surrounding area that complies with all applicable Air Quality Control Commission regulations, which plan shall be approved by the Director of Community and Economic Development Department or their designee prior to the commencement of any ground disturbing activities. This plan shall include a minimum of ten days of ambient background air quality monitoring. This plan shall include a minimum timeline that continues air monitoring through one year of production. This plan shall include a minimum of four air sensors, conducting continuous air monitoring and one meteorological station deployed on site. This plan shall include automatically triggered total air sampling of total volatile organic compounds that will speciate a minimum of B-Tex compounds, benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylene. And state identified priority air toxic contaminants is defined in AQCC Regulation 30. The applicant shall provide raw data to the county upon request." And then, "Condition precedent number five was amended to read, 'Prior to the issuance of a notice to proceed, the applicant shall file all construction documents, access easement documents, and drainage easement documents for review by the county engineering, and shall obtain final approval of an infrastructure permit related to those filings, and BOCC approval of an improvements agreement related to construction of East one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue, all drainage improvements, and the resurfacing of Gun Club Road.'"
Thank you. Any questions for Jen? For the staff? Mr. Odoricio?
I just want to get a clarification. With these modifications, would you guys still recommend approval?
Yes, staff would recommend approval with these modifications.
Thank you. And you guys come back to me after everyone gets a chance, but I'd be willing to make a motion unless there's more.
Commissioner Hudson?
Thank you. Regarding precedent number five, the resurfacing of Gun Club Road, can you define what the resurfacing, what would be comprised of?
Yes, it has been agreed upon by Public Works, CED, and the applicant that Gun Club Road would be resurfaced with reclaimed asphalt.
At the, at the, at what point in the, I'm sorry, just to be clear, at what point?
And this, this would be part of the improvements agreement, and that all of the site improvements have to be completed before any work on the site can begin.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Odoricio?
Madam Chair, with these modifications to the conditions, I would like to move for approval of OFG two thousand twenty-four dash two Connor Pad at East one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue with twelve findings of fact, two waivers, seven conditions precedent, twenty-six conditions of approval, and two notes. And might I say, I appreciate the staff. You guys have worked hard on this. You've worked hard, not just today, not just on this case, but establishing this framework that is being tested today. And I commend them, all of you, for all of your hard work. And I appreciate the work that you're doing to help raise the bar on safety. And I specifically think that what we've come with today is reasonable, meaningful, and enforceable. So thank you very much, and that's why I'm recommending approval.
I'll second the motion. I'll be doing discussion.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Hudson?
Thank you. So I want to thank, I want to echo what Commissioner Odoricio said. I want to say thank you to staff. And I want to say thank you to the prior board for drafting these regulations. They were put in place to, for the health and safety of the residents of Adams County. And I believe that we've put a lot of conditions on this. I, I do hear the residents' concerns. I believe we are doing everything possible to protect the health and safety of the community through these regulations. And I will be supporting today, and I just want, but, but, these regulations, we need to hear from, I know staff will be diligent in all of our monitoring. We do want to hear from the residents and the public. We need to be alerted anytime there's an issue that needs to be addressed. That is what we want to do for all the residents and for the benefit of everyone involved, and specifically the people in the vicinity of this activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would just like to thank those residents, especially those that are still here and heard this entire land use hearing case, that your presence matters. And your testimony also matters to trying to get to a better conditions on site, whether it's water or land, air, quality of life. I grew up in this county. My family's been a part of Adams County for over a hundred years. The growth, we know, is coming north and east. Which used to be, you know, off of seventy-six, that was held south of seventy-six, also Tower Road, one hundred and fourth. We're now seeing growth in the county, and it's my intent to best regulate those. And I want to thank the staff that they, we really scaled up here in Adams County. And we have the staff, I think, second to none in the state when it comes to air quality, oil and gas, environmental concerns. We just added the doctor. Thank you so much for being here, Greg, as always, and Jen, for leading this team and keeping the board apprised of all the changes at the state level. Finally, I want to thank the applicant for also being present in your team. Land use is hard. I really appreciate everyone's dedication to this process. So thank you. Commissioner Pinter, and then we can vote.
Yep, thank you. I will be voting no, as I mentioned earlier. For me, oh, I'm sorry? Okay. I will be voting no, as mentioned earlier. In looking at slide twelve, that's the deciding slide for me. And when we look at the approximate distance from the OGF to the residential building, just a few inches here or there would have changed it from within without the two thousand feet. And given that a majority of the residents either cannot be reached or are a no, this, this doesn't work for me. And we have done a lot. And I believe that that neighbor conversation is really important, and more effort should have been put into the neighbor conversation so the neighbors felt safe in their own homes. So that's why I'm a no.
Thank you, Commissioner. And the land use case passes four to one.
Good afternoon, Board. Greg Dano and the Gas Administrator here today to present the next case, OGF two thousand twenty-four zero one Wakeman Pad at Pohotin. So I won't go into as much detail as I did on the last one, because these sites are so nearly identical in scope and size and placement. The request for for use for an oil and gas facility permit to drill up to sixteen horizontal wells, one production facility and associated equipment, and one access road. The subject parcel is forty-three point three acres in A three, with seven point eight acres of disturbance reclaimed to five point eight acres after the drilling and completion. The applicant is Providence, who is the third largest operator in Adams County, with wells in Adams County, the city of Brighton, and Weld County. They have no violations or unpaid oil and gas inspection fees and are in good standing with ECMC. This is the same map as we saw in the last one. You can see the Wakeman Pad is located in the pink box. It's on the right side of the bigger picture. It's located near the intersection of Pohotin Road and East one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue. Again, two and a half miles north of Denver International Airport and two and a half miles east of Bar Lake. Here are the background of the site photos, looking north and east. You can kind of see east, often the distance there, the, the structure right here is one of the closest homes. It's at sixteen hundred feet away. That's the surface owner's home. And that is the closest facility, and that's looking to the east. And then you can see there's two power generating facilities also to the east, approximately sixteen hundred feet away. There's an Excel power facility and the Tri-State Nuts and Power Facility. Looking south and west, again, looking west, it's largely undeveloped agriculture. And to the south, you can see there's already natural screening of fences. There's a fence and mature bushes to the south that's used for screening that was installed by Tri-State to shield their gas process, or their, not gas, but their power generating facility. Current zoning, this parcel is zoned agriculture three. The DSR allows for OGFs in A two, A three, C zero through C five, I one and through I three. This is again similar. It's in the noise, airport noise and height overlay districts. Future land use designations for this area are large-scale agriculture, mixed-use commercial and public, with the public being the existing power generation facilities that are already in place, and then mixed-use and large-scale agriculture, similar to the Connor Pad. There's a lag today, I'm sorry. Here's a production site plan of this oil and gas facility. Again, it looks very similar because they're nearly identical. The disturbance is seven point eight acres during pre-production. That's the red area, shrunk down to five point eight acres in green during interim reclamation. Similarly, there are sixteen wellheads, two produce water tanks, two crude oil condensate tanks, and eighteen pieces of equipment. I will note that the equipment was cited on the northwest side of this facility to add additional setbacks from residences in the area, and adds around two hundred and fifty to four hundred feet of additional setback for the production equipment. Criteria of approval, again, there are twelve of them. Essentially, it's just that it's consistent with the purposes of these standards and regulations, and that they comply with those standards, and that all potential adverse impacts to public health, safety, welfare, the environment are met through BMPs, conditions of approval, or facility design considerations. Again, substantially equivalent determinations. Similar to the Connor, this facility also requires a waiver. This only needs one waiver instead of two, but the same standards apply that the substantially equivalent protection should be that the measures are equal to or more effective to avoiding, minimizing, and mitigating potential adverse impacts. And you may consider the items listed on the screen there. Again, all BMPs and mitigation measures as proposed by staff during our review are required, and staff is recommending approval of a waiver because the OGF in our determination has demonstrated substantially equivalent protections. Setbacks, again, two thousand foot setbacks to new residences from new, to existing residents from new oil and gas facilities. Administrative waivers are possible. There are eight informed consents required for this. I'll note that one of them is because it's a tenant and a property owner. So there's seven properties, eight consents required, because we require consent from tenants. They obtained five of eight consents. I will note that they have the surface owner's consent, which there is a property, there is a home on the property. They also have the consent of the other closest residential building units. I will also note, they have the consent of the tenant, but they could not get a hold of the landowner. So they have the tenant, the person living there's consent. They just could not get a hold of the landowner to get their consent as well. And then the same table, you can see that there are homes within two thousand feet, but that they have those homes consent. Noise, similar, again, through their noise study, it's a set, these were all separate applications, so I will note that these were not combined together. They could, they had to submit an ambient noise study and a noise mitigation plan. Through that plan, it was determined that mitigation was required. They're proposing the same BMPs and mitigation measures, which is including the use of electric drilling rigs, thirty-two foot sound walls, and background noise monitors in the direction of the nearest homes. Again, you can see the two noise studies, the noise, estimated noise levels drops off precipitously, greater than ten decibels to the nearest receptor. Here's the staff analysis for traffic. Again, it's the same traffic count, so the table's identical to the Connor, because it's the same number of wells, same size of the facility. You can see here on our map that the haul routes are different. So as you recall, in the Connor, the haul route was Gun Club to one hundred and twentieth Tower. And this one is Pohotin to one hundred and fifty-second, and south of Pohotin to one hundred and twentieth, and south on Tower. So completely different haul routes for this application than on the Connor. These are binding. They will also have to submit an additional three hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars in as a traffic impact fee for the Wakeman facility. So combined, that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred and fifty thousand or so to the county for the two OGF applications. Same air quality control measures, so additional ambient background quality measures, additional air quality monitors and sensors. We're working to amend the condition precedent to the same language from the Connor for the Wakeman. And we'll work on amending that as I'm talking. But it'll be the same level of mitigation and BMPs that are in place. Nothing is different from a control measure or best management practice standpoint from the Connor. Includes incorporating all the CD-PHE BMP suggestions as recommend, or as requirements of the county permit. And again, the use of electric drilling rigs, pipeline takeaway for crude oil and natural gas, group three, non-emitting or low-emitting odorless drilling mud, and facility shut-in capability if the pipeline becomes unavailable. Similar, they submitted twelve or more mitigation impact assessments. They will be required to do all the same water quality protections, requiring them to offer to sample all water wells within a half a mile and do the same upgraded and downgraded water, and all the same sampling pre-operations, post-stimulation, and for the next six to six years, six months to six years after completions are done. For this one, we submitted, there were fifty property owners or tenants within one mile. We received two public comments. One was opposed, and one had general questions or concerns, again, about traffic and road conditions, noise, impacts to water and water wells, and then general opposition to oil and gas activity. I will note that the one public commenter who was opposed ultimately signed informed consent with the applicant after they did back and forth with that landowner and implemented additional best management practices. So the one opposition actually signed consent. Same community outreach plan, they will be required to have, they conducted a pre-application neighborhood meeting. They, the operator is required to conduct those quarterly neighborhood meetings from initial approval, and then send out the same notices to all the same one-mile residents. Referral agencies, referral agents similarly. Without concern was twenty-seven J School District, CPW, RTD, United Power and Excel responded with no concern. General comments, which were addressed through review, included Denver, the Division of Water Resources, Tri-State, and CD-PHE. Those were all addressed through all the control measures that are being required in this application. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of OGF two thousand twenty-four oh one Wakeman Pad at Pohotin with twelve findings of fact, one waiver instead of two, six conditions precedent, twenty-five conditions of approval, and two notes. Again, findings of fact, I won't go over them all. The one waiver is from residential setback requirements because a substantially equivalent protection standard has been met. Conditions precedent, the same. We're working on amending the language for condition of precedent number three. Condition precedent number five is not required in this case. So there won't be any talk about a road maintenance agreement in this case, unless the board has that through discussion. Same conditions of approval. The haul routes are different. They're codified here in, or they're confirmed in condition of approval number one. Those are the only haul routes they are allowed to use. Six is the electric drilling rig, same language as in the other one. Seven is pipelines, twelve, apologies, twelve is the water well sampling requirement. Condition number twenty is the implementation of CD-PHE best management practices. They're looped into condition of approval number twenty of the county's permit. And then twenty, condition of approval number twenty-two is that same three-year term. At the end of three years, any wells that are not drilled and completed expire, and then have to come back to the board to get a new, entirely new permit. And that is all I have.
Great. Thank you to staff. So I'm going to go over the land use process one more time. Staff presentation. I'll go to board comments, questions next. The applicant will have the opportunity to present. It will come back to the board for questions. Public comment, so those that signed up for public comment, or those in the room that are here to speak for this matter will be called at that time. I will limit it to three minutes and give you just a warning at thirty seconds remaining of your time. Just a note to the public. Because you don't have another opportunity to come forward, you don't have to come and state all that you know or don't know. You could also state your testimony in a form of a question. Applicant responses, if requested, comes back to the board for discussion and then a motion. Applicant responses, if requested, comes back to the board for discussion and then a motion. So with that, I'm going to go to the questions from the board at this time. And I don't have anyone as of right now. Oh, Commissioner Molika then Odoricio.
Um quick question on um the setback slide. Uh when it comes to property number three, I think you said something very quickly and I don't remember, like, I think I missed it. So were you able to contact this property owner and they are just opposed to it? Or was this individual not able to be contacted?
Correct, they were not able to be found, they couldn't even find where the, the, they were located. And the applicant can speak to this during the application, the tenant even didn't know who the property owner, who they pay their rent to.
Um, okay.
So the tenant signed, so three and four are the same property, four is the tenant, they signed, they couldn't find.
We couldn't find property owner three, so it's not, okay, alright.
Yeah, none of the residents within the two thousand foot setback have filed public comments in opposition. Well, the one that did file public comment in opposition ultimately signed consent. That would be resident number six. They um submitted an initial public comment opposed, but then they signed informed consent after subsequent review.
Okay, and then just to clarify for resident seven, they are officially opposed?
No, they did not file any public comment opposed or in favor.
Oh, we just don't know, okay.
They didn't respond to any.
They didn't respond to anything, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Odoricio.
I just want to confirm, uh you guys are working on modifying that uh applicable, you're, you're gonna modify the similar applicable condition precedent.
Correct, condition precedent number three.
Yes, so with that in mind, I'm um as long as that's done, I will, based on what I've seen, uh I will feel comfortable to proceed, but I want to hear the public first.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other commissioners at this time? No, so we invite the applicant down. You can just state your name and address for the record.
You bet, Megan Grimes with Poco Operating, fifty-eight Preserve Drive. This is an abbreviated version of what you saw the first time for obvious reasons, so um we'll just breeze through it, we'll do general information timeline for uh the permitting process with the county and the state. Uh community outreach is identical, this did require an ALA, so we'll talk through the alternative location analysis. Um our proposed development timeline. Um and I apologize, this, there won't be a best management uh practices section to this one because they're identical to the first application. And then we'll look at the stormwater site plan for this as well. Um same thing here, uh we're Providence Energy doing business with Poco Operating. Insurances and assurances are the same. And this uh presentation is for the Wakeman pad at Pahotten. This is a new location, similarly was previously approved for development um under old rules and expired. Um so that's why we're here today to request a new permit. Um this is a twelve eighty uh drainage spacing unit, you can see that on the map outlined in red. Seven point eight acres during construction, drilling incompletions and flowback operations and then minimized to um five point seven acres at interim reclamation, and this is for sixteen new wells. Um as mentioned in the, the staff presentation. Uh nearest crossroads are East one hundred and thirty-six Avenue and Pahotten Road. And um I apologize to you, this should be seven, not five, that's the difference in the, the county and the state requirement there again. Um this didn't trigger high priority habitat or floodplain, it's not in a disproportionately impacted community. But it did trigger ECMC Rule three oh four B two B, which is the ALA criteria. Similarly to the first application, um the neighborhood uh outreach meeting was on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. It was hosted in conjunction with the Connor, um the Connor uh residents as well. Um our permit for the Wakeman was submitted uh December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Received comments back, first round of comments from the county in February of twenty twenty-four. And we actually went to uh ECMC for a hearing in March last year. And they opted to continue that application until the um until the county had an opportunity to hear and uh decide on an approval or denial. So um after that, we resubmitted amended applications to the county. And then we're here today uh for the hearing, and then we have the same April twenty-third hearing date with ECMC um as the Connor. This is um identical to the neighborhood engagement from the first application meeting. The open house style neighborhood meeting was so hosted October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two at the Flat Rock Regional Training Facility. And same staff was present, uh myself, Land and Operations. Um Greg Dean with the county was there, and then uh three people comprising two households attended in person. With uh regards to uh RBUs and parcel boundaries, there were seven RBUs within two thousand feet of the working pad surface to the property line for this application. Um efforts to communicate and receive informed consents from all seven um having ongoing since September twenty twenty-three uh with efforts um more effort, most efforts in the last year. Uh methods of communication included uh not only certified mail and emails, phone calls, but also in-person meetings. And all details of the OGDP and OGF were discussed and yet the questions were answered. Ultimately received five of eight informed consents, eight instead of seven here because of the duplication on residence number three, owner versus tenant. Um and that includes the closest to the working pad surface, which is the surface owner. Just to reiterate, we did get a signature from the tenant of residence three, but not the owner. Although extensive efforts were made to find the owner of this house, it was kind of an odd situation. Um we consulted with the county as well on potential alternate ways, contact uh information and um were not able to connect with the owner of the home. Three RBUs ultimately made the decision not to sign the informed consent, however, didn't oppose. Okay, for the alternative location analysis, you can see on the map, um we cited three alternate locations. And for various reasons, the, the Wakeman location still proved to be the most uh protective um of health, environment, safety, welfare. Um al- alternate location number one, which is kind of to the northeast of the Wakeman. Um still has three RBUs less than two thousand feet from the working pad surface. Um and it, it, this location uh changes the ability to drill two mile laterals versus one. So it's more efficient to drill from um the Wakeman surface than alternate location one. Alternate location two, which is just a few hundred feet due west of the uh Wakeman location. Um there's one less RBU, so really very similar there. And this parcel has active agricultural activities on it, so um it was not an option. And then we also looked at another location, alternate number three, which is just to the west a little further. And the extended reach to get into this unit just becomes more challenging from this angle. And uh there's uh no surface use agreement executed with this surface owner either. Um additionally, uh just one comment for feedback. This puts two, alternate location over three puts two locations very close together, it would put it almost next to the Connor. So it just didn't make sense um to do that. So the proposed location is cited approximately uh one mile, more than one mile from the nearest high priority habitat. We have a really good working relationship with the surface owner, Mrs. Wakeman. And um we maintain that the, through the use of best management practices, this is the best location for this operation. Development timeline, same caveats here, dependent on approval and timing of all the permits, including ECMC, OGDP APDs and then the Reg seven um air permit through CDPE. We anticipate potentially being able to start construction late this year. And then uh drilling completion early next year with flowback and production happening. Uh at the end of Q one, twenty twenty-six and then phased into two phases similarly to the Connor for the same reasons, availability of line power, uh availability of drilling rigs that can connect to high line power and then approval of permits. The CDPE consultation for the Wakeman happened a little bit longer uh ago. This was in November twenty twenty-three, still with Tessa Sorenson. Um however, Poco committed to thirty-one BMPs at that consultation. Um the reason there are more commitments to BMPs in the Wakeman than the Connor is because many of the BMPs that were proposed in twenty twenty-three have since become requirements. So um they are just built right in um rather than having to commit separately. Same type of uh stormwater, um stormwater site plan here um with burned walls um built to um accommodate a hundred-year flood and minimize surface impacts by not having a separate off-site detention. No unnamed ditches to accommodate here, so you don't see the extra um diversion ditches around this pad. Uh with that, we would request respectfully the Adams County Board of County Commissioners um approve the Wakeman OGF. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So questions from the board for the applicant. Commissioner Pinter, guess Odoricio.
Oh, sorry, I'm happy to wait, or, okay. Thank you, Megan. Um you guys have really done a lot of work here. And I, I, you're gonna find that I'm being a stickler on the consent from the close-in residents. But I do want to pause and say I appreciate the incredible detail that you have put into negotiating with these residents as well as adopting state standards and then moving state standards forward. I, that's not lost on me, and I know it takes a lot of hard work and diligence and time with engineers and time with planners. My question is similar to the last piece that we just heard around the hundred-year flood timeline. I, I do maintain that I think the storms in Colorado are becoming more erratic. And given the nature of the materials on these sites, that a hundred-year flood might um prevention might not be sufficient uh for the types of chemicals contained within. I understand and that you are writing uh and working to the standard and working to the feedback you've received. But I would be curious to hear if you have any um thing to say about protection for community and protection for uh the environment if we had one of the larger flood events like we've experienced in Colorado recently.
Yep, absolutely. So with regards to chemicals or um produced liquids, gas or uh oil or water, um all of those containers are held within secondary containment within the pad as well, lined secondary containment. So that is one more way of protecting um um uh a loss of those materials to the ground. Um additionally, the, the hundred-year flood yardstick was used because it is in the Adams County code. And I would offer that Poco is happy to discuss that if there are other metrics you'd like us to consider. But that's why it was ultimately decided to use that in the preparation of the site plan.
Yep, thank you for that. Does your um insurance or internal risk analysis recommend um a hundred-year as well? Or do you have any um metrics that you use in making a safe site um to comply with your own internal standards and safety risk analysis?
Uh forgive me, could you ask that maybe in a different way? I'm not quite sure what you're getting at.
I got you. Um so our regulations talk about a hundred-year flood. That is something we'll have conversations about, given the weather changing patterns in Colorado. You know, and everywhere. But I'm just kind of curious, when you make the analysis, um are you just responding to the Adams County regulations? Or does Poco have internal risk analysis and standards that y'all use to determine the safety features for extraordinary weather events?
In this, in the instance of weather, no, we look to the code for the county to design a site plan um like this in accommodating something like a hundred-year flood.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Odoricio.
Yeah, can we go back to the site, alternative site analysis?
Yeah.
There we go. Um so the site that you're proposing is the yellow one?
Correct.
Okay, and then um alternative site number, so how many RBUs, what is that residence, but what is it?
Residential building units.
Okay, how many are in the current one?
Seven.
Right, and only, on a, on alternative one, there's only three, alternative two, there's only one, and alternative three, there's one.
One less and three less. Sorry, the language is.
I totally read that wrong.
Maybe confusing.
I'm tired.
Yeah.
Okay, uh I was looking at that as less than two thousand, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's uh, that's okay, I should have written it differently.
No, it's fine, I was just thinking like there's three of those less than two, okay, got it, alright, well. Okay. With that said, I still am questioning why number, I, I don't understand your rationale behind the.
Behind picking the Wakeman site?
Let's walk through each one again.
Walk through each one. So alternative location one, the biggest issue here, because you still have RBUs to, to address, the biggest issue is the development of the minerals from alternate location one. It only allows for one mile versus two mile laterals, um just because of the configuration of the unit. So it's really, it's not a preferred option and it doesn't protect, uh it doesn't add any additional protections to community, air, environment, wildlife to choose that location, and so it just didn't make sense to do that.
I'm not sure I agree with that, it has three less uh impacted residents. And the only rationale you kind of gave me was that you're gonna make more money with two mile laterals instead of one.
So the state ECMC uh requests that we um I'm trying to think how to say this, uh efficient development of minerals is a priority. And so you don't want to strand minerals, and that's what would essentially happen if you could only drill one mile here without an additional surface location.
It's a priority, but no longer the priority.
Uh can I ask a clarifying question, Steve, can I ask a friendly question? I think that what they're saying, what I hear Megan saying is that if they did that location and it would strand minerals, they would have to add a cert pad.
That's correct.
To access those minerals, which would ultimately cause even more disruption to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pinter.
Um now, you wouldn't have to do that for two and three, correct?
No, that's correct.
Alright, and then when you say agriculture activities on it, isn't there agriculture activities on all of these?
So at the time of this analysis, there was active agriculture, so they weren't willing to give up the, the development of the crop for a surface location. That may be different today, this analysis was done um probably at least eighteen months ago. But it also, uh it only shifts you, you know, just a few hundred feet from the proposed location.
Okay, um and then alternative three gets closer to one house that's within even a thousand feet.
More houses, and it's only, um if you can see the parcel lines, it's only one parcel away from the Connor application. So um the cumulative impact there, that would also change like traffic routes and other things um that just don't make sense, we're able to, to be more thoughtful about um traffic and those types of nuisances, uh if we can put that pad just slightly further away from the Connor.
Okay, I, I, I have concerns about this process, but um I'll let it play out. Um I, I just have, I've always had concerns about the alternative site analysis on locations that the state has done. I think it has proven to be uh more of a checkbox, you know, of justification based on the, you're right, efficiency over uh the other factors that I think are the most important. But um when taking into account the aggregate impacts of having another site, I get it, I get it, but.
I think if I can offer this as well, the thing you can't see on this map, and this is maybe my mistake as well, is the other development around this unit and the availability of surfaces, maybe from the north. Or um, do you know what, do you understand what I'm getting at?
Accessibility.
Accessibility um is also a consideration, we just didn't include that specifically.
I get it, if there's, the, the longer distance, the more potential impact. I just sometimes think that we prioritize the money over the health and safety, that makes me concerned. I, I, I'll, again, thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners, questions for the applicant? Not seeing any, so thank you, Megan, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um so in the process, next we have a public comment. So Erica, do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do have one person, Catherine Wakeman.
Okay. Good afternoon, you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Catherine Wakeman, I live at one three seven two one Powhatan Road. I'm the owner of the land of, for this Wakeman pad. Uh I just wanted the, uh to assure the. Uh, I just wanted the, uh, to assure the board, uh, I'm a retired environmental chemist. And I have made it plain to, in the field during my career to analysis, to level four. EPA, uh, review of data, so I, I understand what. Could be go wrong and what couldn't. That's about all I have to say unless you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here, it's been a long, long land use hearing today, so I appreciate your attendance. Okay, public, anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this land use case? Seen a few folks. No takers, okay, so. Comes back to the board for discussion, um, and we can also ask the applicant to respond if necessary, if requested. Anything from the board? Yes.
Um, I, I have expressed my frustration with the alternative site analysis, that, uh, feedback can go to the state. And it could go to, uh, industry on making it more, um, easy for folks to truly understand apples-to-apples comparisons. I think that's an important part for people to be able to justify and show the due diligence, I think I'd like to see it more in the future. Uh, in a way that people can really understand it and it doesn't show, and maybe can include the, the, the fiscal. Uh, factors, but also include all the others, I would really like to see that done, um, in these presentations. And I do believe there are factors that you have to apply, so I do know that that methodology exists. With that said, I'm still gonna make a recommendation that we move forward with an approval, uh, if we could go to the main screen that has the numbers. I will move. It's okay, move to approve OFG two thousand twenty-four dash one Wakeman pad at Powhatan. With twelve findings of fact, one waiver, six conditions precedent, twenty-five conditions of approval and two notes. Noting that we did modify condition precedent number three to match the prior case.
I'll second. So we have a motion and a second, I will just state for the record, um. Familiar, at familiarity with the, the area overall, not down to the, the granular, you know, every single street that's out there. Um, I do appreciate both the applicant and the staff, when we, I forgot what you call it, these truck hauling plans. Is that close enough? Okay, that you're, um, equally distributing, uh, the. Traffic that is created by these oil pad sites, um. I, my family does live on, it's also called Bromley Lane, which is a hundred and fifty-second avenue. That is a major east-west connection in the county, it goes all the way east, I think as far as your heart. Possibly can desire, I think Strasburg. Bennett, you know, you can take it all the way out as far east as you'd like. Um, there is, the, the only difference between this and a hundred and twenty-eighth, uh, my recollection is. Is that there is an at-grade railroad, um, at a hundred and fifty-second avenue, it's. Quite a ways, several miles west of Powhatan. Um, the traffic there is substantial, as is the congestion, because just on the other side of the railroad. Is the interchange of I seventy-six, um, it's a little bit confusing as, as you approach that, um, seventy-six interchange. There's a stop sign, you have traffic that actually does make it over the interchange and there's a stop sign for them to go either. I know it's east-west, but it feels more like north-south, um, at that point, so I just want to make a, a record of that, of a hundred and fifty-second avenue. I know this was the best route of all those roads that are, are out there. Um, so those are my only concerns, especially as it continues to develop and I don't know what we do at that point. Um, as far as road safety or as conditions change, but I just wanted to make that, and I see staff writing things down, so thank you very much. So with that, we have a motion by Odoricio, a second by Malika. And the motion, uh, land use passes, uh, four to one. So with no other additional items on our agenda this, today, we are adjourned at two eighteen PM.